Okay, thank you for your patience. I'm going to call this special work session, I shouldn't say special, it's our routine work session, meeting of the council to order. And those of you who attend these work sessions know our schedule is a little different than our regular meeting. We don't usually take business, do business that we have formal votes on, but it's a good time to accumulate information and discuss matters that need to be discussed. So I thank those of you in the audience who are with us this evening. So we'll start the meeting and I will ask our town clerk if she will call, to call the roll.
Mayor Mashburn?
I'm present.
Mayor Pro Tim Vance?
Here.
Councilmember Behringer?
Here.
Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Here.
And Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Okay, and thank you to all of council for being here at a meeting this evening. Our first order of business, as it always is, is the adoption of the agenda. What is your pleasure, you have it before you there?
Is that moved?
Second. Is there a second?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Mr. Matthews.
Oh, okay, all right. Motion properly made in second. If you favor adopting the agenda, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no one, there is none. Okay, we have no presentations tonight, so I'm going to go right into the first discussion item, which is, two items there, Jürgen Park Phase One and White Deer Park Splash Pad Updates, two items that are dear to my heart, so I'm going to recognize our Parks and Rec Cultural Resources Director, Ms. Maria Blanco. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. We're delighted to be here this evening to kind of bring you up to date on a couple of items related to our new park project. So what we want to do, let's see, let me do this right. What we want to do is brief you tonight on the concepts for the picnic shelter, as well as the play area or playscape at Jürgen Park Phase One, and for that we have, members of the design team are joining us tonight. And after that, staff is going to present you a few images of potential options, or I should say styles, to get your feedback on the aesthetic direction and style for the White Deer Splash Pad. And with that, I'm going to ask Schwedra Nanakar, who's the project manager at the McAdams Company, who's been working with us on Jürgen Park for a few years. So Schwedra?
Thank you, Maria. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Pleasure to be here today and see you all again. So as you know, we have been working on the Jürgen Park project for some time now, so today we are here to share with you the concepts for the play area, as well as some design ideas for the picnic shelter. That's part of our Phase One development. So just to recap on the project a little bit, you all have seen what is shown on the screen right now, the overall master plan for Jürgen Park. What is shown in the red dotted line is our Phase One for the project. It includes two synthetic turf fields and two natural turf fields. The space, the triangular space in between is the play area, and along with that play area, there is a picnic shelter component included in that. And then to supplement these four athletic fields and the play area, we have a parking lot component that's included, and the access road as well in Phase One. Just to show you a 3D image of what that Phase One looks like close up, we have those four fields, and then the triangular space that you see again is what the play area constitutes. Another view of what we had included in our master plan, as you can see here, what we are looking at is, the play area is part of the grading component, so we have two fields at higher level and two fields at the lower level, and the space in between is that leftover space that is being considered for some more innovative and creative ideas, how we can use that space to our advantage. So we have included picnic shelter in that area, that's creating that sense of arrival to these fields. And what you see on the top is the initial idea, what we had to include a play equipment on the top of it, and then the slope was initially conceived as just embankment play. So what you will see on the next series of images, how we are incorporating that as part of play included on that embankment play. So what you see on the screen here now, the yellow on the bottom on that sketch, imagine that as the placeholder for the picnic shelter. So as you arrive from that picnic shelter, the first component that you will see is a bigger play structure component. What we are included, what we are including in this space, the idea of infinite play for children, and also considering how you all had expressed the idea of inclusivity, so considering that component as well as we select the play equipment. So I'll go through that a little bit as we move through these. So what you see on this image, we have included the larger structure, that's the net structure. There will be several smaller components associated with that big structure, like the little wobbly stepping parts for little kids. Little kids can also use the net structure on the bottom level, and as kids grow up, they have the better challenge of going up and using the higher levels of that play structure. And then we have a series of terraces built into that embankment play. So what you see on the screen, we have, we will include roller slide, as well as some climbing components on that embankment play. So kids can arrive from the picnic shelter, use the topmost play equipment, and then they have the opportunity to slide down and get into the next terrace level. There is also a path that would take them around if they don't, if they choose to go and use the path instead of going from the slides. Also the slide, we are proposing a roller slide, which is really good for children who have different abilities, specifically ADHD types of abilities, where they want pressure points triggered, and they love that component when they are gripping on things or they are sliding and they touch their pressure points. So using those components are really helpful for them when they play, so that's why we are selecting those. Again, climbing is another component where they are using their hands and using the pressure points to climb up. So those are some of the ideas that we are considering in terms of inclusivity. So on the next slide, as we move down, we have the second terrace level, where you see that 95.5 number, that's our second terrace level. This is a higher level embankment, so there will be more slope here, so we'll have a bigger slide, bigger climbing components, and also an idea of including boulder play, so kids can have the opportunity to use the natural elements, as well as the play structures. And then this, what that does is creates a loop again, from the upper terrace to the lower terrace, so kids can, you know how kids are, they love to go in loops, and so what this is creating is creating that looped play, where they can use the top level play, go around, use the lower level, climb up again, use the top. So there is variety of play components that are within this structure, it's just not one big structure. So, and then we have also included the rolling lawn, so that's another component, free play, so kids can use the lawn, or the sloped lawn to roll down or sit, seating for parents to watch their kids, or just use some area to also watch the games that are going on on the fields. Then we have the third level, so if you climb down from that second level slide, you get to this lower level. So we are, we are now towards the lower two fields, and what we have included here is a spinner, that's for multiple kids who can use it, so it's a group play component. You can also use the transfer platform, where kids in wheelchair will be able to transfer with a caregiver's help into this spinner, and be able to use that with the help of other kids who can move them and spin them around. The cozy dome is another component, so kids who have sensory needs can use the dome, and it creates a prospect and refuge opportunity where they can sit and move away from the play component, and then gather themselves and then get back into play, who needs a little bit of breather from the, from the noise and the play that's going around them. We have also included these little pods again on the lower level. These can be for little kids to play, or they can be seating opportunity for parents who are watching the game. So it has dual purpose of seating and playing. Then on the bottom slide, picture, we have the spinner component, it has a back on it, so again you can transfer a kid in a wheelchair into the spinner, and the caregiver can, can help them spin around if they need to. Another component at that lower level is the bottom most picture that you see here, the little, the wobble swings, they're not really swings, but they offer the opportunity to move just a little bit from their level. So they are, they are lower to the ground, so someone can sit on them, but also provides an opportunity to swing a little bit. And then we have, we have a staircase that goes down from the upper level to lower level, so wherever we will have that staircase, we will include a bouldering wall, so we'll be able to use the wall for the staircase and create another play opportunity for kids to go laterally and use that space as well. So overall, this is, this is what we are calling it, a pathways to endless discovery. So every time kids come here and want to play, every time they get a new experience of play, they can use all different settings, it's, it's not one, again, not a one big play structure that's stagnant, but every time they come in, they can use the space in different ways, be it boulders, or play with the plants that are in that space, or use the play structures and create these loops for themselves, and create a different discovery every time they are in this space. So all of the pictures that I shared with you earlier are also added on this image. So that is the very short presentation on the play structure, so I will bring it back to this one if, for us to discuss, or if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. By the way, what, what would be the height for the, I guess it's called, yeah, the climbing wall?
Climbing wall will be about four or five feet.
Okay.
It's very low, it's not super high.
I was thinking that it would be, yes, okay. Okay, yeah, let's give council an opportunity to maybe ask questions or make comments, so why don't I start? I'll start with Ms. Behringer, to my right.
I don't have any questions this time.
Okay, well, good, and Mr. Singleton on my left.
Yes, looking at most of these activities, just wonderful, very, very small kids, two and three, some, I reckon they complain, some, I'm just curious, is there, I reckon some things they can do also, that's just what I was asking about, the smaller kids, just toddlers, I reckon is a better description.
Yeah, I think the little kids will be able to use these pod climbers, as well as the little, the swings that I mentioned, they are very low to the ground, so they will be able to sit on it, hold the posts on the side, and be able to rock themselves. And also, I think the slides and the climbing, they can, you know, push themselves and take the measured risk by themselves, how much they can push and enjoy by themselves. So there could be some opportunities for them.
Very good. Because this would be for accessibility issues, would this playground have the rubber bottom all over the playground?
Yeah.
What do you call it?
Yeah, so we, we will.
The mat, it will not be sawdust, it will not, not sawdust, I'm sorry, shavings, it will not be mulch, it will not be grass, it will be?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Dellinger, good of you next round.
Just a quick question, it seems like I've done a lot more topographical work in looking at the topography, it seems like it's changed since some of the first master plans, it looked like there was a little, looked a little flatter, and I guess if you go back to one of the earlier slides, it's an overview, it looks like the second field is lower than the, the north field is lower than the south field, and then over on the left, it looks like the field is lower than the parking level, there's like a retaining wall there, and just kind of seems like another, kind of an obstacle to getting to that space, and I don't know if that's normal, or it seems for like a soccer field, you usually have opener, more open ends, so just speak to kind of the changes that have been made, looking at the topography there.
Yeah, definitely, let me go back to the plan view, that probably will help a little bit. So we have these two fields at higher level, and we have retaining walls that sort of frame this triangular play space, as well as some grading associated, and these two fields will be the lower level fields. And so when you come in from the picnic shelter, the bigger play component will be at the top here, and then we will go down from this level into these two lower fields. So we'll have a ramp that will go from this level down to these two fields. They will be also accessible from the parking lot, so you'll have access to these two fields from here, these two fields from here, but from the play structure, we have a ramp that will go from the upper level to the lower level fields, and as well as a staircase.
Is there any additional, like, costs associated with that retaining wall, like during, across the full length of, what is the north side of these fields, I guess east, the roadside? That seems to have, again, just changed from being kind of more flat and even with the road, to now there's like intentionally, I don't know, lowered, I don't know, is there any reason it's not level, the field's not level with the road, or the road being like leveled down to?
Yeah, because there is a significant drop from East Garner Road towards the center of the site, because we have the stream that's going on this side. So to accommodate all of that grading, we had to do two fields on the top level, two fields on the bottom level. If we try to bring them together, then we are filling in these two fields considerably, that will increase your costs exponentially. So when we try to work with the site, we can save some money by doing that. And we are still working on these grading studies to figure out what's the best way to accommodate these levels.
Thank you.
But this is generally the scheme.
Mr. Vance, questions?
Yes, to amplify for myself what Mr. Singleton mentioned, in reference to the rubber surface for the playground itself, would that be the entire playground that we're looking at now, will the entire playground have rubber surface and no grass?
So we will accommodate safety surface within the fall zone of the play structure. So typically, the playground manufacturers suggest six feet outside of the play structure, so that's the boundary of where the actual poured-in-place safety surface will be. So beyond that, we will be looking at incorporating turf and lawn and ornamental grasses, including some shade trees for people to enjoy the space, and then these boulder components, those kinds of wildflowers, seasonal flowers, just to bring up that seasonality into the play area as well. But generally, the poured-in-place is within the boundary of the play structure.
Okay, but will all the kids have access, be able to access all of the, of the play structures?
Correct, yes.
Okay, Mr. Matthews?
Nothing this time.
Ms. Behringer, anything, let me tell. Okay.
Just one more quick question, we saw all the fields up there, we are going to have fences or nets behind the, all four, all eight goals.
Correct, yes, we will have fences, thank you so much.
Places that don't believe in that, and have a four-foot fence behind the soccer goal, makes no sense, excuse me, it makes little sense, because you're kicking at the goal and the ball goes over and goes to parking lot. And on this, where this is, where this is, all the cars, when phase two is done, have to go through phase one to get to phase two, and we don't want to have soccer balls out there in the parking lot.
Yeah, that's, that's true, we will make sure we have higher fences.
It's a pretty nice long slide up there from the old building down the slope there, isn't it? And I'm looking at the lower picture, yeah, right there.
Yeah, so we won't have the picture that you see, the slide in the background, we won't have that long of a slide on our site. What we will have is these climbing components, but we do have a slide that's similar, but just a little bit smaller than that, within our second terrace.
Okay. All right. Another round, questions, comments, anybody?
Sounds, sounds great, so we will move our discussion to the play, the picnic shelter component, and we have an architect from our team who will be presenting that.
Pretty good. Okay, thank you, Mayor Mashburn and council members. My name is Patrick Hobgood, I'm from Hobgood Architects in downtown Raleigh, it's a family practice my father started a while ago. Delighted to be here tonight, super excited by this project, and really looking forward to hearing your input. The reference images and notes that you sent were super helpful, and I realize the past couple of times, you guys have just been looking at the kind of final image, which is basically a target for what we're going to be aiming for. Things will change as they get developed with structural engineering and materiality. I've got four options to show you guys, two you've seen, but we've reworked based on some of your comments, and two are just new, kind of a fresh look at things. So I won't bore you with the whole extent of this PowerPoint, we've been looking and working with Schwedra and McAdams for quite a while. I know you understand how your town is organized, and also the rate of growth that you're seeing in Garner. Real quick, just about the master plan, we, so we came and visited it a couple of months ago, and of course, there's some beautiful historic structures on the property that we want to respond to, that the concept that Schwedra's been working with, is this Peaks of Preservation. Just looking at the Jürgen farmhouse, you know, one thing we just want to call out, which I'm sure is obvious to anyone familiar with kind of more rural architecture, are the kind of outhouse dwellings, or let's say the kind of, all the different varieties of scale. So you'll see in the bottom right-hand photo, directly behind the Jürgen house, as well as the kind of ones that were painted red. So there's a certain scale, you know, these relate to different types of livestock, or tool sheds or whatnot. That's one thing that we're picking up on, you'll see in the massing kind of studies, and as well as the materiality. These are simple wood structures with metal roofs, we would love to reuse, if we could do reclaimed wood, you know, there's different states of kind of decay, there's also the Civil War hospital, this funky little birdhouse that we came across, that kind of shows up again later. We studied ad nauseam, I won't bore you with all these, tons of shelter precedents, we have the ones on the left-hand side, which are all in North Carolina, and the right side, which are kind of more global. Bathroom precedents, shading precedents, we looked at the sustainable features at White Deer Park with the solar panels and gray water collection, we understand these are all things. But the most useful was to see exactly what you guys like, and these are really beautiful examples. The top two are kind of in the Midwest of the US, Kansas and Minneapolis, and then the bottom two are in North Carolina. So real quick, I'll just run through these, we love the kind of clarity, the material expression, we would, we would aim for something very similar to this, as terms of a very clean metal standing scene roof, the interior wood ceiling, this has a hybrid structure of wood and metal, which is also, I think, really kind of beautifully done, and they have these kind of custom poured-in-place concrete columns, which of course can be utilized in your park shelter. There's also kind of a couple of little quirky things, just to point out, there's that outdoor fire pit that they have, which, you know, we typically don't see a lot in public parks. But more importantly, the bottom right, they show how that language of that main shelter is kind of utilized throughout the park on smaller scales. So we also kind of like that, that there's one kind of unifying design element to tie in. Gooseberry Park in Minneapolis is much more expressive, you know, there's a bigger budget here, there's custom metal structure that's expressed, there's poured-in-place concrete walls. I know there was some discussion about the bathrooms and where that door should be located, you know, just to, just to point out, in Gooseberry, the restrooms, the two men's and women's and the mechanical one is directly in the middle of the space. So I think it's also, we can easily show bathroom doors on any orientation, so I don't, I don't want you guys to get hung up there, just tell us what you prefer. Then we looked at the Nightdale structure, which is impressive, obviously, this is built for a different function, this is a flexible kind of market space, where they can have art fairs and whatnot, but it also has the wood ceiling, which just brings a lot of warmth, it doesn't feel It doesn't feel industrial, another example. And then this was the only image of the one that we could find from Greensboro. But I also kind of like this. Obviously, it feels very seventies. I agree, the comments of the metal roof, it doesn't look as nice, obviously. But we like the broken roof line and the expression of structure there, just to kind of tell the story of how it works. I won't go through this, but you know, we love the master plan. We think this is a very kind of smart way. We've looked at this as kind of a consolidated group of different destinations. So this phase one will be athletics. You've got the potential of the ropes course, the natural forest and creek bed. And then not really mixed use, but the event space that will be the kind of destination once this park is totally built out. These are the little kind of supporting architectural elements. And then this is really what we're talking about, obviously, today, is phase one. So just in the location of this site, we see this as a very kind of essential buffer between faster-moving traffic on the vehicular road, the parking with cars coming in and out. And then you've got the destination field. So really, it's the separation between vehicles and people. So we've kind of called this area this little buffer to kind of cradle the playground and create a little bit of protection and separation from that. I won't go into all of this. We're also kind of doing all the architecture in the Dix Park. And this has been something that we've dealt with for the last three years. But it really comes down to what you guys, how large of a bathroom structure you want. This is just, this slide is just highlighting that you cannot base it on building code. Because if you looked at the size of phase one, you would need over 200 stalls. If you just looked at the playground, you'd need over 36 or 36 stalls. So like all parks, we will base it on the kind of footprint of the building. So if you want, the minimum is probably going to be 10 stalls total, 10 or 11, split between the genders. But you could also, if you said, no, we actually want more, we're anticipating this, we can make the footprint bigger. This just gives you an idea of the sizes of those restrooms. So the top one is basically 10 stalls. This bottom one is 20 stalls or 18 stalls. All of the schemes we show you have 15 total stalls. But we can adjust that. You just let us know that's too many or we want more. So I'm going to get into the schemes. We looked at a lot of variations of roof structures. We narrowed it down to kind of three schemes. So we'll start from the very simplest and kind of the kind of most minimal in terms of design and work our way to kind of the more playful or expressive. So we call this scheme the arc scheme. This section and the form of this is a clear just derivative from the one barn that's going to definitely be lost. This barn, I think, is also the most beautiful barn on the property, but it's on the second playing field. So sadly, hopefully, we can reuse some of those elements in the new structure, which would be a great kind of tie into history. But we just looked at this, kind of the proportions of the space. They worked well for the shelter. So that became the kind of end elevation that you see on the right. And when you put this kind of generic extruded farm, let's say extruded farm roof on the site, it conforms to the playground. So it kind of creates a bit of a cradle on the playground. It gives parents a lot of coverage spaces to watch their children play. I think with the terrace design, it's also like a great, you're at the high ground. So you'll be able to, you know, a lot of park design nowadays is also kind of separating parents from children to give them more independence. So the park design works perfectly that a parent can stand at the top or under the shelter and see all those different levels as their children get further and further away potentially as they're older. This is just a simple roof plan. This is how it's organized. So we also heard very clearly that you prefer one consolidated bathroom structure. We're going to show you a little bit of both and why. But for the first one, we just consolidated it. When you actually activate that space, what you see is what you get here. So you get one side that's a lot of picnic tables. And then the side that has the bathroom, maybe some loose seating to be determined. But you know, places where parents can wait for a child in the restroom or you can watch children play under that side. We'd have a central access point, obviously, the main entry. And you can then get to the restrooms, you know, from the, from, kind of efficiently on the other side. This is a kind of quick 3D perspective of how that looks from above. Not the playground that's been designed, but we didn't have time to make that in the 3D. But you can just kind of see the general feel. And then this is like the kind of simple entry view that you see as you approach from the main access. Of course, we can also, you know, if you guys like it simple but want it to be more expressive, we can also look at, you know, creating a peak or a ridge line at the central entrance point to help better demarcate that area. This is the view from the playground side, looking back. And then this is a view underneath the shelter. So the picnic tables are in the background. And that's that large, kind of almost like a food hall scale picnic area. The reason why, and you'll see, we're going to do another arc scheme, but it has a different roof. But the difference, what we were trying to do when we distributed those restrooms, the men's and women's, and maybe even this like service or a family restroom, was we were kind of twofold. One was not to create such a yin-yang effect where you have a building on one side and open space on the other, but distribute that to create different pockets of space and also to filter out the parking a bit better. So this is a very simple view of the parking lot on one side and the consolidated restrooms on the right-hand side. And when you distribute it, you kind of bring the structure and the backdrop of the buildings further around and help kind of create that privacy. It also helps you create a little bit different levels of space. So we're totally fine with the top version. But the top version, you can imagine how difficult that is to rent out that much picnic area. Whereas opposed to the bottom version, the form and the massing helps break up other spaces. So on the bottom arc, the left-hand side could be a rentable picnic spot. You could have loose seating in front of the restrooms for waiting or watching children play. And then you could have another type of seating or even another picnic spot. So you could always rent one out and have one open to the public or rent two out at the same time. So it gives a little bit more flexibility in how the program of the architecture works. So that's why, without being able to explain it the first time, that's why we were kind of looking at how to break up the massing, also reflect the history of the site. This, I'm not going to bore you with this. This is just showing all the different ways that you can kind of split up those volumes if you wanted to, if you like the idea of multiple types of spaces. We gave this, we thought the first arc scheme had a very subtle roof. That's just an extrusion of the barn that will be removed. This one has a, the concept for this form is more like you take a number of kind of farm pitched roof typologies. You put them together and then you stack them around the playground. So it creates a kind of distorted fan shape that we think really is kind of literally the peaks of preservation in a way. We also kind of created this symmetrical entry. I'll show you what that does on the entry view. But again, you could have an outdoor classroom on one side. You could have the picnic tables on one side. You could have a little bit more diversity in types of space if you break up that large pad underneath the shed. So this is how the men's and women's rooms looks and planned. This is how you could access those. The doors face the playground, so that's very convenient for, obviously, for parents to see their children come and go. And then this is how it could look from above. Same metal roof. We always have the metal roof, the wooden ceiling, probably a concrete pad, and then wood siding on all the bathrooms, just to bring that level of warmth and farmhouse memory to the site. So this is the entry view of the fan scheme. So you see those two volumes help kind of frame an entry. You get a very good, clear shot of the playground. And then once you pass the bathroom volumes, you know, the rest of the playground kind of opens up to you. And then from the playground side, it has a more playful kind of childlike roof, a folded paper or whatever. It gets distorted on the concave part of the arc, right? And then this is the view underneath, the different types of seating potentially, if that's the direction of how that volume looks. Okay, just two more schemes and then we'll be done. So the second scheme is the branch scheme. This one, we really tried to tie into the history of the site specifically. So it's again, a collection of different roof typologies put into a kind of playful organization. But that organization is based on exactly this site and the context. So the entry one faces the Jürgen house. We've got another part that faces the Civil War Hospital. Then we can kind of be playful with the other ones, whether we're framing a view of the soccer fields or the public art at the Roundabout, or even a part of the Adventure Forest, whatnot. But those basically get placed on the sites with these particular views, Civil War Hospital, the band shell or the public art. And that kind of also, in a way, when we saw this one, we're like, well, this is a very sober version of that branch scheme in a way. Because you could also add on to this in kind of a more playful arrangement and still have those connections and sightlines. And maybe even there's historical plaques in there that talk about what is, what these buildings are kind of aligning to. So this is how the roof looks in the site plan. This is it zoomed in. This is the kind of organization of the elements under the roof, at least as a path that we made where we still were separating. So you still see the bathroom doors from the playground, not far off the central access. We could, of course, consolidate this. I know we don't have to have the doors on the, the doors would be on the other side. The next scheme will show that. But when the building's consolidated, also think about this. You really have two sides to work with. Either the bathroom doors are going to be on the playground side or on the parking side. It's very hard to enter these long structures on the narrow side. This is the view from above, which I think looks kind of like a fun little thing, you know, especially next to a playground. This is the kind of tilted entry access as it's aligning to the Jürgen farmhouse with those other kind of bathroom structures just kind of creating that, you know, traditional farm scale, but in a new playful way, which is also something we read a lot into from the comments. This is the view from the playground. And then underneath, I think, would actually be the most beautiful part of this scheme because you would get a lot of different folds as those roof lines intersect. And so you'd have a kind of playful, interesting roof surface, ceiling surface out of wood. Okay, last scheme. This is the kind of far end on the other side, the most playful scheme in my opinion. But we call this the confetti scheme. It's really a collection of shed roofs, also a typology loosely based on what you find in the farm structure. Also, in this little funky birdhouse, that's kind of in a state of disrepair that we saw on a site visit we quite liked. And in a way, we can tie this back into the Greensboro one that has the broken ridge line. If you imagine that as a very simple kind of system that can be replicated to create different light effects, you know, we can show how water's collected and where the gray water goes, if this is the chosen direction. It's by far the most, I haven't seen a structure like this. And I think in a good way, I know that there's two trains of thought, that you don't want to go too far out of the mold. But this is also for, when I look at the development of Garner and this, the impact on this park, I think it's a place that you can be one-off and do something that's solely unique for this exact location. The confetti scheme is broken into two units of gender. We can put those back together, of course, as you prefer. But this created a kind of, I would imagine in this scheme, the bottom-left little area where we have the circular tables, that could be an easy place for, when there's soccer tournaments, to set up, to check in. I know that can also be on the backside of the playground. But you can see the different types of spaces. Some are on the park or on the playground, and some are kind of on the parking. Or maybe you're there just for a soccer tournament. So you're not mixing so much of the general public just around the parking lot. That you could say is maybe one advantage. It could serve a different variety of users. This is how we, you know, the central entry point. And then we kind of also understand that as like a vestibule where you'd want to, as soon as you enter, know where the bathrooms are, if they're separated. So there would be sightlines to those. We can, of course, put this back in one volume, not a problem. But just to show you why we were separating them. So this is how it looks from above. This is the entry view. So you get these kind of tilted, floating square, metal squares of roofing. And then from the playground side, I think it also looks very kind of playful and fun. And then the underneath side of the shelter side, that you can see how that's organized. So that's all we wanted to get through or show you guys today. And then if there's, I've put these slides together. If we need to talk about something specifically, I can flip through and you can see all four at the same time. So thank you for your time.
Okay, well, thank you very much. You've given us a lot of information in a fairly short period of time. So a lot of, a lot of nice options, in my opinion. But some I'm sure will be favored more than others, which is part of the process. So council, I'll start with each one of you to have your observations and say. And I'll start this time on my right with Mr. Vance, if he has anything.
Yes, so it was a lot of, lot of information. In reference to looking at the farmhouse, what I heard early on is that the consideration was being made into incorporating possibly some of the materials into the, into the future shelter. And was there any need to coordinate with SHPO or State Historic Preservation Office in consideration of the historical aspect of the Jürgen farmhouse in development of your concepts?
We haven't, we haven't yet, I mean, spoken to them. We could, are you referring to like getting tax credits for reusing?
No, I'm just looking at, looking at, looking at if they have even considered what is being presented to us at this point. I mean, maybe too early to do that. And I was just asking if coordination has been made.
Yeah, we haven't done, we haven't gone down that road. We did take a really detailed look at the one structure that's going to need to be removed to see if that could be reused other ways, other than just the base material. And unfortunately, it's just in a state of disrepair where I think you would spend well more to try to make that occupiable by the public than to reuse the elements that we can.
And if my memory serves me correctly, the first schematic you provided to us was more in, I guess, took in more the historical aspect of the property, incorporated with the current existing home place along with the hospital and trying to mesh it into the shelter.
I would say, yes, that's true. But I would say like the simplest way, like the first scheme, the top-left arc, looks at the exact proportion of the existing barn and uses that as the start of the design. The second scheme, the fan, that one kind of just playfully looks at farm typology roofs and kind of sprays them out. So it's not as rooted to the site as the other, as the other three options. The third option, the branch, that's the one I think you're referring to that literally aligns on access with historical markers that are there now. And then the fourth scheme, the confetti scheme, that one's really just kind of more playful. It's kind of a little bit like the birdhouse we found at the Jürgen house.
I don't have any more, any more questions.
Okay, Bill, I'll go to you.
Excuse me, yes, sir. I know everybody's going to like something different and just, and I certainly like that number one because I just like the presentation, how it looked. When you see these roofs where they're kind of like you were looking at with inclement weather, strong winds, rain, what have you, people get under those shelters, what kind of issues have you had when you've got a split roof like that? Can rain come sideways?
For sure, rain, wind-blown rain can come in when you have those. I mean, you can minimize it with the overhangs. But I think in any outdoor, open-air structure, you're going to still get that wind-blown rain at the lower elevation. So, you know, you can find places to provide to, you know, we wouldn't want to put a clear story up there for the cost of that glass and whatnot to prevent that because you're going to get it below. And also, metal roofs come, you know, there's a higher velocity of shedding water. So there's ways you can slow it down. And what we would really want to try to develop with any of the roof schemes is a way of collecting that gray water, you know, so that can also be reused and add a sustainable feature. But the short answer is yes, wind-blown rain can come through those broken roof lines.
Okay. I'll go back to Mr. Dallinger.
Nothing yet, I'm going to wait.
Go to Mr. Singleton.
He's got to say first.
I'll go to Ms. Barrick first.
Right?
I have some mixed feelings. And I'm the person that likes to think about it a while before I make a decision. As I look, I'm much in favor of the historical aspect. As I look at the two picture, two on the left, the top picture, the shelter, looks more historical to me and doesn't look as, in my view, historical isn't ornate, okay? However, the branch pointing to the historical elements of the property is something to consider. So I'm kind of, I like those two best. I'm not real thrilled about the one in the lower right corner. That looks a little bit too broken up.
Okay, understood.
But, you know, I may be subject to change my mind.
Okay, you ready now, Mr. Singleton? Anything?
Sure. Okay, I agree with the confetti issue. Sorry. The thing I don't like about the top left is I don't like just a big, a long roof. I mean, it makes it like a barn. I'm going to be in Eastern Ohio tomorrow and I can see all kinds of barn structures just like that. I think we need to keep some of the structures of the farm. But, you know, when this thing is built and going, and that's not a farm anymore. Most people going there, I don't care less about the farm.
Yep.
We've got to realize that. This has got to blend tie-old-to-new. And most people, to be honest, young kids don't give a flying flip about a farm. Just to be honest. The branch concept is interesting. You do have broken, not broken, I mean, separated in angles. I like that. This summer's the one I like in Minnesota, the Gooseberry, I think it was called.
Yep.
Because it's, I mean, this structure, because this is phase one, is going to be the... the
Yes.
The main feature of that park for years is phase two is going to be a wild, down the road, and so it needs to be, needs to have a strong, uh, statement when you come in there that this is where we need to go right now, because with the fields and the playground, that's, that, that needs to draw you there. So from my opinion, I like having, you know, the point, however you may do it, um, you know, to draw people to it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as far as, and, and also with the branch, you said, of course, it's facing to different places, and I think that, um, you know, even though, well, the old house, the house will be there until one's going to face there, which is great. Um, I think underneath, we, we need to try to, some of the different designs you showed us, restrooms under there or not, I think we need to make sure we try to maximize spaces. And I like having it broken up. You're right, the top left has it all in one space, and I agree that the seating should be broken up, uh, the picnic tables, because I think of, uh, Lake Benson Park Shelter, which you've seen.
Yes.
And it's broken up by the fireplace.
Yeah.
But also it's a split roof. When they built that, they told us the split roof was built for to create air, to create airflow.
Yeah.
Let the hot air get out.
Yes.
Go around.
Yep.
That's what they said 30 years ago.
Yeah, that's still true.
I'm just telling you, that's what I heard. I wasn't on the council, but I remember hearing the debate, and that was some really good. You think, our debate is so calm compared to that one, it's, you just don't believe.
[laughing]
You wouldn't believe it, but anyway, um, I, I, I think breaking it up helps because whether it's a rental or it's a soccer team eating lunch.
Yeah.
Having coached and been out at, uh, at the Ariel Soccer Park and different sized shelters, it's nice to have a breakup where a group can sit here and a group can sit there.
Yeah.
Uh, I would say that when you do the bathrooms, I would, you had one with nine in each, I would do nine in each.
Okay.
I would do eight or nine in each.
Okay.
You showed one with nine in each, I, I think we saw.
Yeah, yeah, very early.
Maria showed us some stuff of that, I would do, uh...
Okay, these, these, all these are, um, seven and eight, so...
Okay, or seven and eight, whatever, but more than four or five.
Yes, agreed.
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 Some of the small ones out there have two or three, they have three in the boys and three, three in the girls, and that's just not enough.
Yeah.
And it's for four fields, and I was like, I want them the first time, I was like, come on now.
Yeah.
It needs to be a little bit bigger. Um, so yeah, seven, eight, whatever is chosen, but, um, I'd like the, the branch type view, again, because it has, the, the metal roof, but with the wood underneath does give it a, uh, you described it almost perfectly when you said something, uh, the, it softens the metal, but it makes, it's, even though you're in a field, you're surrounded, be surrounded by trees on the border of this property.
Yeah.
So it gives it some of that feeling. I'll be quiet, Mary, someone else can talk and talk later.
There you go, all right. Mr. Dallinger, did you come to a point, um, you want to add something? Sure.
First of all, um, thanks for coming in and sharing the process.
Yes.
Piece of it. I think that adds a lot to the
Big time.
Perspective and understanding. Um, I'm kind of, um, in a very similar place, I think, between the arc and the branch. I think the arc is a little too boring, but you get it.
Yeah.
And I think the branch, the concern I have is it, it's, um, riskier from a use prediction perspective because of its, its shape.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's kind of a, a lot of thought would need to be given to how things are aligned and
Yes.
Really think about, people will sit here, watch this, they'll go this flow, and it's harder to do with such a asymmetrical structure. And so I think that's, that's really my only hesitation on the branch is just that it's unconventional, and so it may, the programming around it may be a little more challenging. Um, maybe it's not, maybe it'll just be perfect and it'll work out, but, um, I guess I think that's my only reservation, too. I like something a little askew, but it's, it's kind of colliding the future and the past, right?
Yeah.
Um, so again, that's my only hesitation with the branch is the use, making sure it's meeting the rental needs, the flow needs, um, that, that piece, so.
Yeah.
And I think, too, you highlighted with your visuals of the other parks, that materials element is so important, and I think seeing the metal and the wood come together makes all these clearer into what the final image is going to look like.
Right.
Um, and your point about the branch, too, with the roof, the ceiling from the look up being just unpredictably interesting.
Yes.
It's kind of cool, too.
Yeah. I will, I will, I will say, those are, those are all great comments. We, I don't want you guys to also feel like you are selecting the, the scheme. We're just, you're just choosing the direction, and if it's branch, we are, we will personally make a thousand branches and show you the best five to 10, or best three to five, you know, like, we're going to study the, the chosen direction as ad nauseam for us to, so that, that might be three branches, will work better than five or seven branches. You know, the same with the arc, we'll also be looking at how to make that more ceremonial entrance, or if there's another break in the ridgeline. So, don't feel like it's, uh, you're, you're buying this what you see. It's going to be developed, we're going to get structural engineers input, we're going to look at the, the column sizes and the material, and we're going to, you know, we are an open book, like, the more process that we can, that you guys can stomach, the better for us, because the input for us makes all the decisions. If we, we can't just work in a vacuum and then take it or leave it. We, we want to really, you guys be on board and excited as we are about this.
I think what Mr. Dallinger, he mentioned on the branch, and you showed five, and there can be five or seven or eight, and maybe it has one less, maybe it has four.
Right.
I mean, we don't want to make the X, I mean, we don't
Yes.
We don't have a gull, gull dorm from NC State out here, we don't want that, um, but we want, uh, the United is the X.
Yes.
Um, but, you know, I, I appreciate what you brought to us and showed us this way, because this is, uh, very helpful, um, looking at it this way.
Okay, great.
And this and the playground, see this and the playground together
Yes.
And how they're going to, they're going to work in there.
Exactly.
Is, is, uh, uh, important. One thing I'll mention, and this is getting a little out there, but as we look at doing both these projects, I know we're going to probably put benches around outside in some of these places, especially toward the other end of the, uh, playground for family, kids or parents or whatever to watch your kids. I think that's always, that's been mentioned more than once.
Yeah.
And also, because it's going to be wide open out there, the use of shade kites in some parts of this will probably be beneficial also.
Yep.
Mr. Matthews, you?
Yes, sir, it, I think it'll help it out also, after hearing all my colleagues and the points they're bringing up here, uh, the branch thing does seem more, I think, be a better idea, and I agree with Ms. Singleton, we're going to need a lot of bathrooms out there.
Yeah.
Uh, it's, it's just, it is what it is, and below the playgrounds and everything going on and tournaments, you know, you can't get enough, but I think what you presented have, we've been sensitive to, people are to picnic and they're not sitting right next to the bathroom.
Yes, sir.
That's just a general seating area.
Yeah.
But, uh, I could go along also with, with the branch and the larger restroom, but I think, I want it to be different, I want it to look good.
Yeah, me too. I don't want to, and whatever we do here, we don't, we, we will never repeat it.
Mm-hmm.
Like, that's our, the way that we practice architecture is like, everything should be as bespoke and tailor-fit to that use and site and the people that are going to be occupying it. So, what we're doing at Dix Park looks nothing like this, so, and it won't, and we won't ever take this and do it somewhere else either.
You mentioned, uh, something, uh, earlier about, um, the, uh, the restrooms and incorporating wood. Now, you're talking about the outside's going to be wood?
Exterior.
Exterior, I'm sorry, exterior's not going to be split-faced cement, no, we're not going to be.
No, I mean, they probably will be built CMU because it's very durable and inexpensive, but then we want to clad it.
You're going to have some of the wood around it.
Yes, sir, yeah.
It's extended.
And if we can use the wood from the, from the barn, we would, we will jump to do that. We would love to reuse that wood, uh, so that there's literally part of the history on these buildings. But we just have to go down that road and check the materials and see if we can reclaim those.
We did that in, uh, White Deer Park. The, uh, the floor at the Nature Center came off one of the homesteads there, so we used that wood.
And it's still a solid floor after all these years, isn't it?
Yeah.
I think so.
Mr. Vance, I was going to go back to you, anything?
I have no further questions.
Okay, over here, any others?
No, I'm just glad everybody agreed with me.
Okay, anything else here, Gray? I think, yeah, I'm, I'm pleased to see, I think we're sort of coalescing around a, a certain, um, architectural image there that hopefully gives you, uh, um, I'm not sure we need thousands of variations of it, but at any rate, uh,
Right.
Give us, um, a pathway to go down and then see some of the other, uh, tweaks you'll do to it, I guess.
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, all right, any, go ahead.
And one thing I want to check in on is, I want to make sure council's comfortable with the elevation change on the field that we talked about earlier, because that, that is a considerable cost to keep that all flat topo. You good? Okay, all right.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
We appreciate that, yeah, okay.
Right, so we're moving parks, uh, we're heading to, uh, White Deer, which Katie's here, because that's her, uh, that's her favorite place, uh, in the planet, so, um, and it is actually, it's a beautiful park, and we're really proud of it. Uh, so, um, you may recall sometime in July of 2022, we came to you with an update on the bond program, uh, and our quest at that particular time was to, to identify the optimal location for the town's, uh, first splash pad, uh, along with the inclusive playground, and at that time we determined, uh, and, uh, you, um, you determined that White Deer was indeed the best location for this. Inclusive playground on the west side, which is the one closest to the Nature Center, and the splash pad on the east side, which has, uh, three shelters, uh, um, the big open area, as well as a bathroom building or restroom building. Uh, and I, I showed this slide at the time, because we want to get some, uh, input from you, so we can give our design team, uh, direction, uh, on the look, the aesthetics, uh, proposed for this particular splash pad. And, and in general, splash pads sort of design, uh, and availability of, of, uh, components, there's two very clear styles, one's very colorful, uh, the other one's very much sort of just based on water, uh, and this is just a couple of examples, and they mostly have the same type of sort of water flow, uh, arches, and, uh, this is sort of how they look in the two different schemes, uh, or just, oops, wrong arrow, uh, or just sort of spray, it's just water coming out of the ground, uh, and sometimes they have components to it. Typically, they're either fiberglass, uh, rubber, uh, the metal parts are usually steel, and they could be powder coated or painted, uh, and all that sort of, uh, adds to either cost maintenance, um, and so on and so forth. Uh, we also, uh, as a staff, took a, a couple of field trips. Unfortunately, they're, uh, not operational in the wintertime, but we still got to see, uh, the sites. Uh, Clayton Municipal Park is not far from the rec center, I would say about 10 miles, give or take. Um, and this one is, I, I would say it's the newest one in Wake County. Uh, it's a lovely park, uh, and it does have a splash pad, and I think what we wanted to show, to show you, uh, was how they look when they're operational. Obviously, you get kids, uh, very active, you get the water, uh, but then we also wanted to show them to you when they're not operational, because, uh, splash pads typically are open from May through October, give or take, depending on the weather, so they will spend about six months of the year, um, shut down, uh, because of the weather. So how they look in the off-season is also something to consider. Uh, Fuquay Arena, uh, it's, uh, one of the largest ones in Wake County. Uh, it is, uh, fenced, uh, and sometimes they're fenced, sometimes they're not. Uh, this one has, uh, it's sort of set back in that particular park, it's called South Park, uh, and it is the one, um, splash pad in Wake County that charges a fee to non-residents, and you have to obtain a membership card as a resident, uh, in order to access it. Uh, it is staffed, uh, because of that. Uh, Cary has one at Jack Smith Park, uh, off Penny Road, I think, um, and this one's sort of a smaller one, and it's sort of very well incorporated into the rest of the park. There's a dog park, and interestingly enough, you have to pay to go to the dog park, but you don't have to pay to go to the splash pad. Um, uh, another fairly new one, which is a different style, and this is the only one in Wake County that does not have the colorful forms. This is very much based on, on the water play. Uh, it's a Chavis Memorial Park, which is, um, again, sort of north of us, not too far from, uh, from downtown Garner, um, and it is sort of, when it's off, uh, it's a fairly large plaza, this is a very large splash pad, uh, and certainly, um, it's a lovely park, too. Uh, Wake Forest and Knightdale also have splash pads, and you can tell it's sort of very similar, uh, style to, to the one in Cary, Fuquay, and Clayton. Uh, and again, this is sort of a summary slide of the two styles to, to consider, and we wanted to get your feedback, so we can, uh, work with our design team. They're currently, uh, completing the survey work on the site, uh, and they need direction so they can start the conceptual approach to this particular project.
So I'm going to get to council in just a minute, but let me ask you, Maria, uh, the issue of recyclable water, um, how does that fit into the mix, and is it more costly or?
Uh, I think you get, it costs either way, uh, domestic water, they defer to the ones that just sort of goes into the, the wastewater. Uh, the cost of water can be higher, obviously, because you're using more. Uh, the ones that are recirculating do have some expenses related to the chemicals that have to be used to treat the water. Uh, it's certainly, I mean, environmentally friendly, uh, because you're saving water, not as friendly because you're using chemicals, uh, and then the other one, you are sort of friendlier, uh, because of the absence of chemicals, but not so much because you're sending a lot of water down the, um, wastewater systems.
Do you know if, uh, some of the others here in Wake County, if that's...
They're mostly recirculating.
Recirculating.
Yeah. I think the, the, it seems that nationally, the cost of water for the municipality is one of the driving aspects of determining which direction to go. Uh, there's also quite a few of these municipalities that already have pools, so they have the comfort level of dealing with, um, maintaining the sort of, you know, the right pH balance, the right chlorination, and all that stuff that goes with, uh, with dealing with water in, in a pool situation, which, I mean, ultimately splash pads are sort of very similar to pools.
Okay. Council, uh, has, I'll start with Kathy, if she wants to go first.
I prefer style A. I think that, that color and geometric, um, shapes are, uh, attractive. I think that the, the, both parents and children will enjoy it being there. Um, I think it's, it'll bring more people to our town because of the looks of it. I, I can appreciate wanting to, uh, be economical, but, uh, we're growing, and that's part of growing, is to embrace new concepts.
Okay, uh, Ms. Singleton, you ready yet?
Sure. I like the, uh, I like the colorful aspects of, of what you mentioned, A. I like, um, some of the, the dump buckets, I think that's cool.
Oh, yeah.
Um, that story that Mr., uh, Mercer sent out today from Splash Pads from last year, showed some of that. Uh, I think that's important to have for kids to enjoy in different ways. you know, having some of these, just the water area, I know you can be able to see you have the colorful stuff, but you can have some of those, uh, on the right with just the water also, you know, around the, uh, border, however it is designed, but I like, I want it to be colorful, I want kids of all ages to enjoy it. Um, I sent Maria a list of questions today, I'll get to that later, but she answered them all, well, involved. Um, um, you know, I'm like, maybe getting in the weeds, I, I just had different questions about where we're going to put this, and, uh, you know, parking, uh, the restrooms, uh, I, I didn't know about the fences, and some of these, you see a fence around them, some of them you don't. Um, I know that you got, the one concern, of course, is trash gets down in there, where there's trash, it can get down there regardless, grass and dirt can get there, it don't matter if we put up a, a solid wall around it, it's going to get there, uh, so that's going to happen. I have wanted to make it as colorful and playful for kids as we can, since this is the first one that we're doing.
And I get it, Ms. Dillon, just a minute. Are all these that you're looking at essentially, I mean, we're dealing with the same sort of square footage in terms of the size of the area? Was that very much?
It depends. Once we complete the survey, we'll have a better idea. And obviously, the cost of components will also help us kind of get to the square footage that we can afford. They're typically the, I think the Jack Smith one, it's under 1,500 square feet. The one in Fuquay, it's the larger one and that's, I want to say, 6,000 square feet. So we'll have to sort of figure out what is the optimal size for the particular location that we have. And again, sort of trying to meet budget, because we do have a budget. And, you know, concrete is expensive these days. And typically, the surface on which these are installed, it's concrete to sort of prevent slippery surfaces, so it'll, it works for its purpose. And you can see in some of them, they will have colored concrete where there's water activation as a way to sort of mark the space where the kids will be playing so that the parents can stay slightly dry on the edges.
Okay, thank you. I'll get back to council, Ms. Ture-Dellinger.
Yeah, I'm in favor of Style A as well, particularly since when it's not in use, it just looks like a concrete slab in the middle of the park, of a nature park, which does not look great. So having those art elements is important, I think. The water cost and circulation is not something that I'd thought about. And kind of, I'm sure the size of the park and hours of operation all feed into it, but kind of knowing what that cost is. The recirculation, a little, I have some concerns with the amount of chemical usage being in the watershed and being in kind of these naturally, these sensitive areas. So I'd be kind of afraid of a lot of chlorinated water going into Lake Benson. So I think kind of getting some numbers around that water use. I'm sure it's probably cheaper on the front end, but over the long term, it may not be. But I think the uncertainty around the chemical element, I don't know if we want to jeopardize that, you know, I don't know. Those are my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like everybody else, I like Style A, lots of color, it's a happy place for the kids. I had the opportunity, and I shared with Maria, last summer went down to the Fuquay Splash Pad and spent a couple hours with folks down there operating, trying to get the upside and the downside. And they have a fence around there, it's for a reason. They said, when a carload of, a parent brings a carload of kids, one parent has to stay outside the fence or in the rest area with those kids. You don't drop them off and leave them. And they have that one central entrance to it there. And so some kids, they don't drift off or, you know, and there might be some special needs situations, you want to keep everybody in one area. Now, so one thing they said they wished they had it was more like picnic areas shaded where the parents could sit and watch all the way around there, and didn't have it one or two. And it was really hot that day. And she said we needed to add a lot more to that. Now, the size of that, and it's the biggest one, but I'll tell you what, they were packed in. She said they pack in every day down there. And like Ms. Singleton, I love those dump buckets. And they only had one, I'd like to say two, because them kids gather around just waiting for that to come out. But it is a big attraction, I like the color, but let's don't shortcut ourselves on it, because it's going to be a very big attraction, you know. You know, other things we can get a little lean on, but if Fuquay is the biggest one, I tell you what, we're going to need one about that size with our town and what the people going out to that park, it's going to be really enjoyable. So I like, again, like the color, let's get the size, that fence and an extra seating area, shaded area for the parents to sit under while the kids are having fun.
Absolutely. Great.
It'll be, in my view, yeah, I agree with what you're saying, the thing that's unique about these type of things, and the same with swimming pools, you know, you can use picnic shelters year-round, obviously these are confined to certain months of the year.
Nothing fancy, just some shade.
Yeah. Mr. Vance.
Yes, I'm in favor to Style A. I wish I'd asked my grandkids to look at before I said a few things, they were at home.
Thank you, they helped you out.
I didn't even think about it. But yes, I'm favoring the Style A and with the decorative fixtures. And just have a question in reference to maintenance of both. Do you have an idea of maintenance? Which one would be the maintenance cost or the maintenance, which one would be more maintenance heavy than the other?
Well, I mean, anything that involves water and sort of shooting water in the air will have some pump issues. So there is some maintenance that is sort of part of this. The ones that are colorful because of the interaction of chlorine, the sun, and paint typically have to be sort of cleaned, mineral sort of deposits have to be taken out. That's the sort of main maintenance. And periodically, they will have to be sort of repainted. They're usually steel with epoxy or some powder coating surface, it depends. Some of the newer ones have acrylic components, fiberglass, and those have a certain limited span, so replacement parts are usually available whenever they get, you know, too, too sort of cracked by the sun. So both have maintenance requirements, I think. Recirculating systems also have the sort of, all the, you know, tanks and whatnot that you have to have because of that. So the maintenance of our circulating system, certainly a little bit higher because of that. And then taking care of the above-surface components, if you have color on anything, you do have to take care of it because the sun and pigment of color, depending on the color, I mean, yellow appears to be particularly weak when it comes to the, to maintaining its sort of strength. So we'll work with manufacturers and try to get a sense of what colors last the longest to make sure that we don't get ourselves into one that's going to be faded in a couple of seasons, but one that has a longer life.
Counsel, I'll get back to you in just a minute. I'm going to do something that may be a little unusual, but since we, by my calculation, maybe have about one member of the public here tonight, I'm going to ask Mr. Williams if he's consulted with his grandchildren and if you want to offer up any quick observations at all. Sir?
The colorful one is more pleasing. I do have grandkids that go to a splash pad in Lake Beach, and that place is fenced in. And I think that does provide a little bit of control there. So obviously, I would like the more colorful one and extra dump buckets like Mr. Matthews said, that's a lot of fun. So our six-year-old and three-year-old enjoy those, so that would be the feature. Wondering if the Style B, is there any other use that could be done, Style B, when it is shut down? Or is it like you got to stay out? Options for using that style. Obviously, folks and myself like Style A, but I was just interested if Style B offered some alternative for an additional use outside of the summer season.
Thanks, sir. Thanks for being here and thanks for your comments. Any comments back?
I think typically, because of weather, both will get shut down kind of at the end of October, just like an outdoor pool doesn't get much use after, you know, when it gets cold. But both spaces can be used after the season. You can still sort of hang out and play around them. You can pull up a chair and read when it's empty. So the spaces will still be used. It depends on the fencing, whether we decide to go with fencing or if it's a permanent fence or we just fence it in the summertime. I think we'll explore some of those access control. But we don't, we don't, I don't think we want to preclude people from interacting with the space when it's off.
Yeah, just the one observation I would make, and maybe this is a negative, but I sometimes see skate rollers or skateboards used in places they shouldn't. They used to irritate me when I was playing a lot of tennis when kids would bring their rollers on there. And potentially, this could happen here, we just have to watch that. I think that wouldn't be good. But, okay.
Don't give them any ideas.
Well, they have those ideas anyway.
Of course, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
For location. Now, I know y'all have the data on how the shelters are rented in the warmer months when this will be operated, particularly on the weekends. And the concern is parking, because if all three shelters are rented and this is, it happened on one of those days, we can have enough parking or we can be parking on the side of the driveway.
We do have that concern. I mean, I think again, this is when trying to figure out what is the best way of controlling access to it, whether it's sort of reservations ahead of time, whether, I mean, kind of the Disney model that you can sign up for, you know, Tuesdays at 2:00, you can go to the splash pad. That might be something that we might need to use on peak days. But we would have to figure out how to control access. So I think we'll need to sort of look at some alternatives. I haven't seen any major traffic problems. The one at Clayton has playground splash pad, I think there's a couple of ball fields and there's a basketball court. And they have good parking. They don't seem to be having parking headaches. It is accessed through a very sort of narrow road, but I have not heard from my counterpart there that they're having traffic problems. We can dig deeper into some of the communities that have had splash pads for a longer time to see how they have managed that and learn from their lessons so we don't have to repeat them.
Well, just to ask it, because the number of spaces, parking spaces, were for the park with the model of what's there. And here you're adding something that's very heavy, you know, be heavy user, it's going to be very user-friendly and very heavily used. So that's the concern I have is the number of, do we have enough parking, particularly on the weekend?
Right.
I mean, in the summertime, with kids out of school, it's going to be busy all the time. I mean, the one Atlantic Beach hops every day of the week down there, especially in the summer, it's a busy place. So I expect this will happen like all the other ones in the area. But that's just a concern is the parking. And I mentioned in my email to you about the restrooms, but this is a little bit different. It's not going to be, you know, it's not like having 40 or 50 kids on a couple of fields playing soccer at the time. But just want to make sure, and I mentioned a paved walkway, they had a way to get up to the, there, whether it's using the one we have or adding another, I don't know. But that's a parking, I just want to make sure we've got it thought out.
We'll do some additional research on parking.
Okay. I mean, because look at the rec center, when it's full.
When it's busy, it's busy, yes.
And somebody raised a cane back then when we were building a base, the consultants said, oh, this shows this, this shows that. I said, well, it'll show this, when you're full, it'll show that we don't have enough parking, but anyway.
Maybe we can give out special attention to those who ride their bikes there and who wouldn't have to worry as much about parking then. But anyway, just a little ways to ride your bike, of course. I'm going to go back around. Mr. Vance, anything else you have, sir?
Over the questions.
Mr. Dellinger.
Yeah, I think the parking is kind of an issue just with the increased use. And I don't know, is it, you know, possible to start looking at places to expand parking, like that, kind of that open field near the entrance area, maybe adding another small lot there. I mean, not immediately, but just thinking ahead if, where we're going to put new parking. That's not also, you know, where we can, because I know on the other side, we can't really do a lot with parking.
Right.
And that field there seems to be a little less used than for open recreation. So just an idea that might be something to look at.
Great, absolutely. I mean, we can, yeah, overflow parking, which we might need.
Yeah, overflow.
Absolutely.
I had just an observation. I've visited Jack Smith Park in Cary with my grandchildren several times, and even when it's full, there's still is, there's plenty of parking. Looks like there's no more room for any more kids under the splash pad, but there still seems to be room for parking, so I'm going to be optimistic.
Got anything else here?
Phil? I think you got a lot you're going to be working on, but I'm just excited about getting this thing moving forward as quick as we can. And it's going to be exciting. I thought the alpacas down the street were going to be exciting. This is going to be, I might call it Alpaca Park or something, who knows?
I just want to be there when the dump bucket falls on you the first time.
Yes, sir.
We have not a ribbon cutting, but a splash, a splash grand opening, or the grand opening will be a splash.
I'll be there.
Be there and get that picture.
We'll have this in video, so yes.
Okay. Anything else, Chris?
Yes, sir.
You feel like you have the direction you need?
Yes, we do. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, okay. Good reports, sure enough. All right, from Splash Pads, we're ready to go to our town attorney on meeting rules and procedures, I believe. So Ms. Jones, we'll invite you to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to be asking you to provide guidance. It's not going to be as exciting as picnic shelters and splash pads.
Might be more controversial, but yeah. Thank you all for coming tonight, being here. We appreciate it.
Just bear with me. I think they closed out everything. When I first started with the town, your interim town attorney, Fred Baggot, said the rules are in need of updating. And it's been, so it's been on the plate, but hasn't come, hasn't been necessary, but some issues have been coming up over time. So it is ripe for your review and adoption. Your original rules are governed by a number of things, state law, your town charter, your Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, which I've also proposed a few amendments, and then what you have is your adopted rules and policies. Your current rules were based on a book from the School of Government. It references a book that doesn't really exist, so there was a disconnect with it being updated with the title not being put in correctly. For the rules, I have, this is the current one, now Supreme Court Justice Trey Allen updated this. And what happened is they split out the county and the city, different rules, because there are slightly different rules that apply. So this was the base for the new set of rules. And then you'll see at the end, some of the things that weren't covered by this book that you had in your existing rules, I kept in there. Unfortunately, because of the timing, town staff, the clerk and managers didn't have a lot of opportunity to look at this before, so they may have some input as well in some of these choices. In the town charter, really those provisions are, you know, how many members you have, whether you have a voting mayor, those kinds of things. You could amend that by ordinance if you wanted to. It would be subject to a petition for a referendum, but it's one of those, you don't have to go to the General Assembly if you wanted to change any of those. I went with the assumption that we like the form of government, we like the number of council members that we have, so there's no proposals to change the charter. Anything else in the charter requires, of course, action by the General Assembly. So getting in, turning your attention to the ordinance, which is Chapter 2, there are just a few discussion items that were highlighted in yellow. And if you want me to pull up these documents, can probably pull those up as well. But basically, it was limited to council members, the town clerk and town attorney who could request ordinances. I thought a good addition would be adding in the town manager, since he's in charge of the entire town staff and all of the departments. So that's one choice to be made if you want to allow that amendment to go in. The filing fee for running for office has to be adopted by ordinance. It's currently in there at $25 for both the mayor and for council members. It can be any amount from $5 to 1% of the salary. So there's a big range. I just did a cursory look at what some of the other towns, so we're not the lowest filing fee, but we're not the highest either. I think Apex or may have had $500. So, you know, that's something you could choose to change if you want to. There's an ordinance provision about compelling attendance, being called by the mayor or to council members. My concern is, you can say you're going to compel the attendance of someone, but unless you're going to send out a police officer to go pick them up and bring them here, I don't know that that's necessarily a provision that you need. But you've probably heard in different parts of the country, sometimes in the legislature, they don't show up so that bills can't be passed. And, you know, can they compel them to have to come so that they can have a vote on a bill? One thing that's in the ordinance is about the preparation of the minutes, saying it would be at the next meeting. Sometimes that's difficult to do, particularly, for instance, you know, tonight, and then we have a meeting next Tuesday as well. So I would recommend that it be at some subsequent meeting so that you're not, you know, the clerk doesn't have that burden. And then there was a provision in the ordinance about agenda items being requested by members of the public, I think the Wednesday before. That's really somewhat out of date since now, you have to have a public comment period at at least one meeting a month, and there are Uh, and there are other avenues for members of the public to get, you know, questions or requests to counsel. And again, even in the existing language, there was not a requirement that it had to be, uh, put on the agenda or some, you know, there was still latitude there. So I can, um, stop here if you have any, you know, preferences one way or another, or if you're, um, okay with the proposed changes that were in the packet.
I have a question.
Yeah, go, go ahead, Ms. Page.
Uh, under part six, under the agenda, if I'm reading this correctly, it's, uh, item number four, delivery of agenda to council members. And it says, and except in the case of an emergency meeting, the agenda and agenda package shall be furnished to each member at least twenty-four hours before the meeting. And my, that's not much time.
So that's in the rules? Can we hold on to that for, you know, as we'll go through that?
Okay.
I guess my only comment is on the preparation of the minutes in setting at least, uh, a time window of, I don't know, whatever is reasonable for doing it, so that it's not sort of indefinite. So I don't know if it's thirty days or forty-five days, or I'm not sure. I would kind of defer to the town manager and clerk on what is reasonable. But I think a time certain is, um, a good idea.
I can see what you're saying, but I also say the next meeting. I mean, look at the situation, we don't have an assistant clerk right now. And Ms. Gibson, I know recently she had to leave to go for family business. She has to go and be gone for a week, family business, and the minister's supposed to be due next week, then that's practically impossible. So I see why that, that's reasonable not to have it at the next meeting. I think we all would understand that, but putting the rules and somebody could bring it up. But I think Mr. Dellinger's right, if you put a cap at thirty days or whatever, yeah. Cause we've had meetings three Tuesdays in a row now. Yeah, so it'd be, you know, challenging.
Ms. Gibson, would you like to weigh in on this matter?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
She's gonna tell you tomorrow.
Well, sorry, yeah. So, I mean, I certainly agree with the idea that there ought to be, uh, some, some flexibility built in and, and maybe, uh, some specific timeframes. But, uh, I don't think, uh, you know, necessarily doing it a subsequent meeting, that, that, that would be a little tight many times because of the way our meetings roll. So maybe, uh, suggested thirty day, excuse me, a daytime, not a daytime, putting it out and so they would be done by X number of days. Or upon request of the town clerk, maybe to need more time if she needed to, would give us a caveat, uh, when things are like they are now, where the assistant person, uh, is, is not, that position is not occupied. Just a couple of those things. Mr. Vance, you have anything?
Uh, no, I agree.
Okay, Mr. Matthews, anyone? Dellinger?
About, just what we just talked about, right?
Yeah, right.
Okay, yeah.
Right, yeah.
No.
And we're talking about the other items on there as well.
Right, I'm gonna go through the rules, but just wanted to get through the ordinance because that will have to be adopted by an ordinance.
What you mentioned about the, the manager requesting ordinances seems to be reasonable also, cause that could come from, well, it could come from, well, the town attorney also. Are you allowed to request an ordinance?
Yes, so right now it's, um, council members, the town clerk or the town attorney.
I think the manager would be, and that should fall in that also.
I mean, in reality, the town manager managing the clerk could, could require it. But it, you're more typically going to get ordinances recommended by the town manager or the town attorney.
So is this, um, clarify if I'm at the wrong spot, but, uh, I, I was thinking there was a, there was wording that suggested that if the town clerk and/or the town manager, I guess, um, wanted to propose something, that that would sort of fall under the idea of one of the council members agreeing with that and maybe sort of taking the, the lead. It's almost like, uh, a, a bill in the legislature that somebody takes, uh, takes, takes the lead and who is initial sponsor and sponsoring that. Or, or was that under another area?
Right, so, so your charter provision does talk about sponsoring. But I, I generally interpret that as if you do a motion to approve, you have now sponsored that, that particular piece, which is a little different than, um, some jurisdictions may say, you know, an individual member can't request it. You have to have maybe not a quorum, but at least, you know, some, something, some amount more than an individual to have all the work done to prepare ordinances and new things like that.
I'd like to think that we could, uh, agree fairly quickly on the issue of the filing fee. I mean, I, I think.
I would just leave it where it is.
Yeah.
I'll leave it where it is.
It's like the first time I ran out, twenty, I thought it was left, I was at ten dollars, that was a long time ago.
It looks like it, it may have been last amended in twenty thirteen.
Yeah. The compelling attendance, uh, I think I'm interpreting your statements as mean that, that maybe, uh, well, I wouldn't wanna call it a throwaway item, but the one that, um, maybe is unnecessary or maybe hard to enforce.
It's probably more of a practical difficulty. You know, it, it's not necessarily a crime not to attend, but who, who could really physically make someone attend? Which would be law enforcement.
And I don't mind saying, uh, maybe I shouldn't, but I, I know there are members on this dais that I served with as a council member. There was, there was a time with one, uh, council member that, um, you know, uh, apparently there was some medical issues, but, but this person did, did not really keep us informed in terms of, uh, you know, why that person couldn't attend. And it became a little problematic for a period of time, from my view. But I think that may be some basis for it. But that's the only time I'm aware of where there's an issue about attendance and compelling attendance.
And, and I think the issue may somewhat be cured by the fact that if you're not excused, you're an automatic yes on some things. So there's really not a benefit of staying out of a meeting where there's already a quorum. Uh, I mean, the issue would be if you couldn't get a quorum to actually have meetings and conduct business.
Okay, anybody else want to comment on that? Okay.
All right.
On the, Mr. Mayor, if I may, on the, on the time period for the minutes, yeah, um, I think the thirty, you know, strive for thirty, but not be too hard fast, cause there's gonna be some situations potentially where something might come up. But I mean, I know we strive to get them at the very next meeting when we can. But I just, thirty is a good number. I just don't want it to be like must or shall on thirty, cause there might be times where, cause that's, you know, two meetings possibly. If you miss, then you go to the third meeting, that would be over thirty.
I can add also, it depends on the workload at that time and what we have going on, um, during that period.
Okay. So there's an agreement on that, right?
Yeah, so some, some language we could work with where we strive for thirty, no more than thirty as a general rule. But knowing that things do happen, yeah. All right.
So meeting rules, uh, as you can see, it, it becomes a larger document in, in following the School of Government's, you know, suggestion. And it's organized the same way as the book is organized, uh, because the book has commentary and kind of explanations about certain things. So if there would be a need to interpret a rule or a dispute over a rule, um, it's easier to go look at the book and look up the same rule number. So I kept that structure. So you see, it's not organized the way your meeting rules have been organized in the past. But going through the highlighted portions, um, you know, one issue is whether you want to allow individual members to attend meetings virtually. Uh, as you know, remote meetings are not authorized, except in a state of emergency declared by, um, the governor or that body of, well, I guess the general assembly can also declare a, a state of emergency now. Uh, but many places prior to the pandemic and continuing after, um, do allow members to participate either by telephone or by, you know, streaming into like a Teams meeting. So that's something to think about. It is an area that's kind of gray in the law as to whether it's approved or not. And there are some jurisdictions putting in local bills, um, to ensure that they're able to do this. You know, there were a number of local bills and statewide bills last year that didn't, um, get out of committee. So that's one thing to think about. But what it would be is individual members provided a quorum is physically present, so that you don't have an issue with quorum. Some places, um, in virtual attendance, um, you can attend, but you can't make motions or vote. You could do that now, you, if you're out of town, you can watch Facebook Live and, and see that. So I think if you really want attendance, you want the person to be able to participate fully in the meeting. Uh, but that's something to think about, like I said, since the laws in flux, it's, you know, we can adopt a rule if you want to allow for that. And then if it's, you know, we, while we don't have a determination from a court, court or the general assembly definitively, then you could continue to allow that. So that's something, if you wanna think about it or you wanna provide guidance.
I wanna ask a question about it. Um, so in, in places where, uh, even after the, um, the emergency order has gone away, that apparently have a provision where a member can attend virtually, is there a limitation on how long that can occur? And, and I ask, I don't think anybody on this board would do that, but I think it would be, in my mind, reasonable for a person to say, well, you know, I'm just not gonna attend meetings in person, I'm gonna always attend them virtually and maybe wanna attend all their meetings virtually. But that seems unreasonable to me, but there may be people here that think that's not unreasonable.
I haven't heard of there being any abuses of that. I think it's, it's an accommodation for people who for, you know, vacation or business, you know, can't attend, but still wanna, can't attend physically, but still wanna be able to participate in certain decisions. Prior to the pandemic, there was an electronic meetings provision in the Open Meetings Act. That said, as long as you can simultaneously hear, and it was really during the telephone era. And now, you know, obviously with streaming, you can actually see the room. You know, you can see, you know, observe people's, um, you know, emotions and, and body language and things as well as just hearing them. But, uh, like, many larger jurisdictions, they might have one or two people, um, you know, basically not in the room at the time. And it's been an accommodation also, I guess, for health reasons, for some people who, you know, um, you know, shouldn't be in a public space during a time. But I don't know of anyone who's ever done it for a long period of time.
Anybody else, uh, wanna weigh in on that?
I, I mean, I can agree with what you're saying. I think like, it shouldn't be the pattern, but they're sort of like, accepted to do it if necessary under, you know, I don't know if permission from the council beforehand is necessarily anything that strong. As I don't think it should be a practice of someone to not come to the meetings. So I don't know how we limit it to like twice a year, or I don't, I don't, I have no idea how.
A recent example with the planning, um, commission is that I don't remember exactly why the member couldn't be present, but wanted to participate in what I suggest that they do is that the, the members that were physically present have a motion and vote on whether to allow that participation. And, and they did, and, you know, that person was able to fully make comments on, on projects and participate in, in the motions and votes. So the highlighted portion is from the School of Government, which, you know, basically says you don't count towards the quorum and you don't vote. And that insulates it from a procedural defect in any action you would take. I don't think it has to go that strongly, but I do agree that you would need to have some parameters about, um, when the remote participation can be used or not used.
Now this, we're speaking now of council members only, is that right? Not staff members?
Right, right now, staff members can continue to participate virtually. Really, it's just in state law where it talks about physical presence in the voting statute for council members that, that gives everyone pause because it says, you know, those that physically present, uh, that it's mandatory on council. So it's not mandatory on your appointed boards and, and commissions either. They can, you know, they could have fully virtual meetings if they wanted to, and if, you know, you were to allow that.
Okay, anybody have further questions?
So.
Do you have clarity on that?
No. But I can, if you want, I can draft something up that I think is a reasonable, like, policy to use for that. And then you can decide whether to incorporate that. And again, any day we might get a decision on whether this, you know, you can, or, or there might be a bill that passes that actually says there can be virtual meetings, and then it's not an issue at that point.
And I might just ask Mr. Manager down there if he has any, uh, thoughts on this.
As far as staff or council?
Well, I was gonna start with council, then mention, well, I don't think you, uh, but yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think I always probably prefer staff to be here for meetings, if, if they can be. But I would, um, I would, I would opt to allowing them to be virtual if it adds value to the meeting versus them not being able to attend at all. So, so I don't, I don't have a problem with it if council doesn't. As far as council, I think it's, you know, not as a practice, but you know, if from time to time, somebody needs to do that, that would be up to you. But, but it, it doesn't bother me at all.
Yeah. And staff might jump up and throw me out for saying this, but, and I think our staff does a, a, a good job. But, uh, I, most of the time, if they can be here in person, I think that's the preferred, uh, way. Certainly there are times and there are people on staff now, I'm sure, who need to attend virtually. So as long as we have some flexibility there, that's fine.
Right, right, right. But I think it's better to have the most knowledgeable person on virtually versus a fill-in that may not know as much or, or not having that person at all. So, but we'll, we'll take that under consideration.
That's fine.
I think they get easier after this, but, so one of the enclosed sessions, um, you have a choice as to whether you take a vote on who may be in the room, or you just do it by consensus. My experience has been by consensus, and, um, there have been certain times when you said this person doesn't need to be here for the next item on a closed session. So, um, you have that option. I would recommend leaving it at consensus.
I have a question about that though. So by consensus, do you mean unanimity? So does that mean if one council member says, I don't want that person in here, that, is that, that's a, you still have a majority, so it's like a vote, but, so what's the definition of consensus and?
I think consensus is a majority, but not necessarily have to be unanimous. Otherwise, you would say by, I guess, unanimous consensus, but.
It's sort of a vote.
Right, it's at that level of a vote. Yeah, I mean, if it has to be unanimous and someone's not happy about that, you're not gonna have the closed session, I guess, cause you can't decide who's gonna be present. But it's up to you, it, it just adds a layer of taking a vote during closed sessions as to who can be present.
Or, well, go ahead, I think I was about to jump ahead, so I'll wait.
So under the Open Meetings Act, there is the right for the media, and I guess, it talks about the media, but I guess it could be any individual, the right to broadcast your meetings, meaning not just record your meeting, but actually air it, um, either live or subsequently. So, and what the Open Meetings Act says is that you're to accommodate these requests, but if there's some kind of like physical limitation, because every media outlet in the state wants to crowd in here and we can't accommodate that, that you may have to hold the meeting in another location, you can actually charge that to the media. But this rule is really about, um, how much time do they have to provide notice that they're going to come and broadcast? So like we have the overflow room upstairs for people to watch it, it's probably harder to broadcast from, from up there. So, you know, I talked a little bit to staff, but, um, I think the recommendation had been twenty-four hours. That seems a little long in the media cycle for. That seems a little long in the media cycle for me, like, but probably having some advanced notice would be good. Because if you have an advanced notice requirement, you can then limit the people first come for, you know, those who got their request in prior to the notice provision, we're going to accommodate them. Those that didn't, maybe they're not accommodated for that particular meeting. So it becomes an enforce- forceability issue if there would be some item on your agenda that would garner a lot of media attention.
This provision was in there somewhere, right? So if you've got several news media represented and obviously you can't accommodate all of them, isn't there a provision where either council can confer with the town manager, somebody, where you would say you would require a, what's the term I'm looking for here, a, where the medias are sharing?
Right, pooling.
Pooling, that's the term I'm looking for, yeah.
Right, yes, that can be required as well.
Yeah. Well, not everybody's got their camera in here, but they would join in with a designated entity that they would pool.
Yeah, I don't know exactly how that works practically, but that is in the law that we can require pooling.
Okay, yeah, I thought I saw it somewhere.
For space and safety issues.
Okay.
So if you don't have, you know, really firm opinions on this, I would say, you know, two to four hours, I think is probably more of the news cycle to know when they're coming. I think I talked to Rick and really haven't had that many requests from the media to come in and actually film and broadcast.
Right, it's my understanding.
So suggested by the School of Government, who is responsible for preparing the agenda? The choice is generally the town clerk or the town manager. It may not make a difference practically, but the manager is the employee that you have direct supervision over rather than the clerk. Even though the clerk is actually the one doing the work to put together and distribute the agenda. So that's something, you know, to think about. And then there's, you know, how much time in advance for getting something on the agenda? And there was, I think, a suggestion for like seven days. That may be too short of time. By the time it takes to prepare staff reports and then also get the agenda compiled and distributed, that might be too short a time.
Isn't there, and this is probably a minor point and maybe, I don't want to think I'm trying to parse the language, but as I understand it, you know, the agenda that is prepared by our town clerk and that is, comes to the council, that is considered a draft agenda until council votes that to be their agenda, isn't that correct?
That's correct.
I mean, that's a sort of a minor point, but I guess I've always viewed, you know, when we get it from the town clerk, that is the agenda. But officially, that's a draft until council says, we vote and this is our agenda.
Right, when you do the adoption of the agenda.
Right, okay.
And then the other issue is when do you want to receive the agenda packet? So the School of Government had said, you know, they had put in 24 hours, but that's really just a placeholder. It's your option as to when you want to receive it. With the exception of emergency meetings, which by nature of being an emergency, you know, there might not be time to prepare an agenda packet for those.
So currently there's 24 hours. Is that, did that come from the old rules? I'm looking on page 26. Delivery to council members, except in case of emergency meeting, the agenda, agenda packet should be furnished to each member at least 24 hours before the meeting. Well, I'm just, I'm just saying that.
In your current rules, it just says you'll receive one. It didn't have a timeframe in there. Now, it did have the, request had to be in a minimum of seven days prior to the meeting.
I think in our previous conversations, we'd honed in on the Wednesday or the Thursday. Now that we've moved the meetings all to Tuesday, I think that, if I remember, if I'm remembering right, that's kind of where we landed. And I think that's just important to give us time to review it and get any questions answered prior to the meeting if we can of those workdays available, so.
My recollection was two business days with the Monday and the Friday. So ideally it would come out Thursday and you'd have two full business days. But I might not be recalling that exactly.
We strive to get it out Thursday at the latest, and we have been getting some on Wednesday. You know, we'll get them out as soon as we can, but Thursday at the latest.
I think it, it's probably better to do Wednesday because then if you can't get it done, you have an extra day built in. Otherwise you end up on a Friday and then it's coming in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's just a buffer. Again, my main concern is just being sure if, after I go through it, if I'll need to reach out to you or have questions that there's, you have time to, you know, respond and not over the weekend.
The only problem with the Wednesday is like next week, like we'd have to get you the agenda tomorrow for next week, which is a pretty quick turnaround after having a meeting. On weeks when we don't have a meeting, we probably have more time and leeway to try to get it out on a Wednesday. And it all, a lot of it depends on the content, too. I mean, some things we can turn around pretty quick and some, some you can't turn around as quick. So it depends on the content, but we're striving to get it to you sooner than we had been.
I do like those new sheets where we're looking three meetings out. So if it's not the two items, that's how much more advanced notice on that, those two items.
Yep, and that is subject to change.
I understand. Well, again, I don't want to belabor the point, but I'm just trying to understand. At some point, maybe goes back a ways, there apparently was, I'm looking under delivery to council members, there was just a 24 hours before the meeting.
That is just a placeholder from the School of Government. Your rules didn't actually adopt that date.
Okay, so that's where that came from, that was.
Right. So it was a suggestion that you might want to put a timeframe in.
Yeah, nobody on staff is suggesting that, so.
Right, well, I knew they probably weren't.
Yeah, that definitely wouldn't work, yeah.
Just wanted to make sure I understood where the wording came from.
Now that our, all our meetings are on Tuesday, then Thursday should work as long as we plan individually to make time to pursue anything we need to do once we get the agenda.
All right, and then if we're ready to move forward, with the consent agenda, typically I think it's the manager who sort of chooses where to put things on the agenda. And again, when you adopt the agenda, you decide and you can always pull things from the agenda. However, there is a suggestion to have a rule that there's some advanced notice to the manager if you're going to pull something off the consent agenda so that the manager can make sure that the appropriate staff is here. I think in practice, a lot of staff members might come for that part of the meeting, but because it's after presentations and, you know, you can be an hour or so into the meeting before you're getting to the consent agenda. So again, if you want to choose a deadline for yourselves to have to tell the manager that you are thinking or you intend to pull something off of the consent agenda.
I don't think it should be required. I think it should be a best practice. We might read it again and think something, or something might come into our head and say, oh, you didn't think about that. So I don't think we should be precluded from taking something off the consent agenda if we need to during the meeting. But I think the best practice would be to give that notice if possible. The wording of the requirement piece.
I agree with that.
It was a best practice.
Currently there's a specific timeframe, isn't there, for what we're talking about? 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting?
I don't think it's in our current rules. I think that was suggested.
It's, no, this one was actually in your rules, that you're supposed to do that by 3:00 PM. I don't know that that's always been the practice. We don't often have someone pulling things off the agenda. The other thing is some jurisdictions, when you pull an item off of the consent agenda, you vote on the rest of the consent agenda and then you pick that item up right away. And some places you wait and it goes on new and old, so after public hearings and those kinds of things. It's sort of a preference thing. Again, I think in some places that's an accommodation to staff who might not be attending the entire meeting, that they can answer whatever questions there were about that item. Where I've seen it more is that where individual members may have to recuse from something on the consent agenda, you know, they'll do one vote on it, but because it's a non-controversial item, then they vote immediately on the recusal item.
What we've done is at the time of the, when it's pulled, I think the mayor makes a suggestion to where to put it so that it's, makes sense, whether it's staff-related and get it out of the way quickly or if it can go to new and old business. I think leaving that flexibility at the time it's pulled for, have the discretion to know based on what's on the agenda and who's here.
Okay, so petitions and comments, again, you're required to have a public comment period at least once a month at a regular meeting. I suggested two minutes. And again, this is more for if you would have a night where you have a lot of people who want to make comments, there's a way to limit it. Some places they will do three minutes, the first 10 people who sign up, and then you have to wait till the end of the meeting if council decides they want to entertain more petitions and comments. So it's just a preference. Again, we're not generally got a hard buzzer telling people that their time is up, but it's something to consider for if you have a situation where it's a very busy agenda and there are a lot of people who want to address council at that meeting.
I'll say this, and you know, three minutes is fine with me. The reason being is years ago when Bainbridge neighborhood came to us about the issues they were having with water and sewer, the town had to go before the Wake County Commissioners and I was one of the ones that spoke. And that two minutes hard and fast, and they put that light on, you cannot hardly get anything out in two minutes. I mean, they knew what we were there for, but we were reading and you tried to practice it and still couldn't do it. So the me three minutes is okay, or you can put in there two to three minutes. Gives you the flexibility. Because the mayor had been hard and fast, I've, a couple of times, we've had some folks who are a little long-winded running on my phone and very quietly showed him the phone. It was at three and a half or four minutes. And need to, you know, rein someone in a little bit, but I prefer to say maybe two to three minutes. I hate to do something like two minutes because as we know, you can hardly get something going in the first 20, 30 seconds and you've, it's just challenging. I just never forget that light coming on. And they killed the mic at Wake County back then. I mean, dropped it, bye, sit next. That was how they treated it. This is before you were on there, a long time.
Now it's three minutes, you got a green, yellow, and red. Yellow means you got about 15 seconds to finish up. But even then, you got to stay on top of it.
Well, giving a limit also keeps some folks from just rambling on and on, just saying whatever they could say to keep talking. That happens occasionally. And that's, that's an abuse of the privilege.
Three minutes, it's the consensus, okay.
Either two to three minutes.
Two to three may be good. That ideally would, people would see the two and encourage them to try to stick to that, perhaps.
That's kind of like asking us to stick to it, Mayor.
Yeah. But we may also need to be a little more diligent about calling time on them so that, that folks don't have the impression that they can just keep on going and keep on talking and no matter what.
Okay, we'll work on that.
In your existing rules, there's a reference to the citizen comment form that is available on the website. Now, it talks about treating those written citizen comments in the same manner as someone speaking from the floor. So the question would be, do you want those read at the meeting by the clerk or the manager or someone? Or the fact that they're being emailed or through the website just be distributed to council by email? You're also receiving emails that come to you directly. You know, so, so I guess it's the interpretation of, the existing rule says they'll be treated in the same manner. That would typically mean they would be read, but is that what you intended? Or do you, would you rather just receive those as emails?
Yeah, my brothers, I'd just rather receive it than have it read to me.
And I think too, if we read them, it could cause some confusion because it's not coming from somebody they can see presently in the room.
I agree. I just, there are some people who can't make it to meetings. And again, I'm not recommending we read them out loud. But making sure that they're somehow acknowledged, even if it's just somebody wrote us an email and so at least they know that we have received your message and the public knows that we've received. That's a good idea. It's just name, address, and we've received this email on this date. They had comments, just for the record.
All right. Moving along, there's a suggested rule about if the presiding officer, whether that's the mayor, the mayor pro tem is engaging in debate, having someone else preside. I don't, this is a rule suggested by the School of Government. I don't think in practice we've had that issue. But there would be a rule allowing you to have a motion. The awkward thing is then you choose another member who also will probably be actively participating in debate. But it's there, so the issue you decide is may or must. And I would say may because I don't foresee this being an issue that comes up, you know, more than on a rare occasion.
It would hardly ever happen as long as I'm mayor, I think, in terms of, you know, some issues I might have pretty strong feelings about, but I respect the fact that as a presiding officer, one can't actively engage in debate and still preside. But if one chose to, then I think the way the manner sits now, the mayor pro tem would be the person that you would turn to. And of course, if the mayor pro tem was actively engaged, then the council would select among its members who would be the presiding person. And then that person technically would almost need to not engage as long as they were serving in that function, right? Let me.
That, that kind of pulls into rules 21 and 22. You could allow the mayor to make motions. The mayor would not be able to vote on that motion unless there's a tie. Some jurisdictions use this to move decisions along, especially where there's likely going to be a split vote on things. And it ties into rule 22, which is for small boards, which this will be considered a small board, not requiring a second, which means anytime an individual wants to raise a motion, it's going to get voted on. It might get voted down. I don't know that that's the most efficient way, but these are our ways to allow more participation. So your practice has been to have a second?
I agree.
So I think we should keep that.
I agree.
I'm looking at rule 22, says second not required. Is that what you're referring to?
So you're right. So you're right, that would be changed to a second is required on any motion.
Yeah, okay, I think, I'd prefer to see that, I think.
But I guess the thing is, do you want to allow the mayor to be able to make motions? Doesn't change his voting ability.
I don't, well, I'll speak from the mayor's position right now, it may, obviously, future mayors may disagree, but, I mean, I, I don't have a problem with that not being, that the mayor can't, and I guess I say that because I think in interacting with council members, if there's something that I would like to see a motion made on, I'd like to think maybe I could talk to one of my council members to see if they would present it rather than coming from the mayor. Could I parse words for just a minute, and this is, I don't want to lead us astray on this. I know in the order of business, and I'm looking on page 28, as we follow the current process, this says invocation and pledge of allegiance, and then, of course, this kind of brings by a council member on a rotating basis. Maybe I'm being overly, what's the term I'm looking for? I guess, if it, if it needs clarification at all, it would be by a council member or his or her designee. And I guess what I'm suggesting is, I don't, I don't think our rules would stipulate that, you know, that has to be done by a council member, and obviously, by practice, it is not, but I don't know if we needed to clarify that at all.
That's in your rules right now.
Right.
I think that was a part of, has, the constitutional aspects of prayer at meetings has evolved over time. You know, first, it was no prayer at meetings, then it was only members of the body could present the prayers, and now it's more permissible to have, you know, invite other speakers to do that. So, you know, we could take that part out of there, but that, I think that's just a progression of, of how the law has evolved on prayer at meetings.
And, you know, I don't know if council has any particular thought on that, one way or the other. Perhaps the way it's working now is fine. Okay.
Right, so it's the, I mean, the council member or designee? And, and that keeps it from opening up to a complete open forum where you would have to allow, you know, a sign-up list and rotate through the list.
Okay, thank you, I'm behind you there, so you go right ahead.
In rule 25, the question is, do you want to limit your own ability to debate or talk on items? I don't know that anyone's ever spoke for 10 minutes on a particular item, but...
I think the mayor's done a good job of reining the sand where we get, and there's always times we can always call for the question.
I agree, even though I can get long-winded sometimes, I think me and Mr. Evans both can get along with it, we hadn't got anywhere close to 10 minutes.
It's felt like 10 minutes.
Pardon?
It's felt like 10 minutes.
It's like 25 sometimes, but I don't think we've got close to 10 minutes. I mean, talking five straight minutes is, yeah, that's a lot.
So that, that whole part can come out, it's not required to be in there, it could come out. It does say that the presiding officer, you know, will, will control the debate, so it's, it's how much do you trust your presiding officer, or do you want rules set down, you know?
Mayor, Mayor Marshman has been a little more stringent on, on the rules and following them, and Mayor Williams was a little more flexible on letting us kind of ramble at times, so.
Endlessly.
Which one?
All right, so then...
We always silence our cell phones before meetings.
It is silence, always silence, that was Siri, because I put it into it over here. My phone's on silence.
Some other rules that are, you know, suggested with some options, you know, do you want to put time limits on certain things, when you put something, you know, table an item, or when you refer something to a committee and want it to come back, when you want to pick it back up off the table, so to speak. So, you know, they had put in 100 days, you know, 100 days is kind of harder to count than 90, when you think like three meetings, but, you know...
I mean, there's, I remember having this discussion with Mr. Anderson years ago, because he told us that you can delay action on an item on purpose, but by law, I mean, you can't delay it for so long, it has to be, he called it reasonable. It's got to be a reasonable amount of time, and maybe that's how 100 days came up, I don't know if that was in there or something else, but I remember he said, you know, you can delay it on purpose, not to vote on it, but you can't do it for so long, because the person has the right to have what they brought before, voted on, so I don't know, I'll take your recommendation.
It somewhat depends on, you know, applications before you, for rezonings and special use permits. You might get sued more often than whether, you know, which splash pad option you want to, you know, pick.
Yes.
But the, the rule, or the motion 16 really is there, that's more the one that one member keeps bringing up something and keeps pushing something, it gets voted down, do you just want to say, like, don't bring it back again? It's, it's sort of like when you deny, you know, a special use permit or, you know, a rezoning, like, they can't come back for a certain amount of time. Again, we can put any number we want in there, there's always a motion to suspend the rules, and, you know, not have these time limits apply in, in specific situations. But they are ways of keeping business flowing and actions to be taken, so something to think about. You know, and whether you really, you know, you would have to do a motion, for instance, to say, this can't be brought up again for six months. You know, it's not an automatic necessarily.
On a, a rezoning request, or CUP, SUP, but we, I mean, I mean, we've got one coming back this week, I mean, excuse me, next week, that was deferred from last week, to the, the continued, continued the Buffalo, the Highway 70 mobile home park request, but they, I mean, we can't keep delaying it, even if they're, I mean, we usually ask them, okay, it's going to be two weeks, or we delay it two weeks, they may not, they may not like it, but we can do it, we just can't keep delaying and delaying, we have to, there's a sometime, we have to have a vote, correct?
Not necessarily, I mean, you have not adopted what's called a shot clock, where once an application comes in, if you don't make a decision, it's auto, you know, in a certain amount of time, it's automatically approved. We don't have that here, so in, in some respects, until, you know, until you make a decision, there's nothing to appeal. But again, that doesn't stop people from suing and saying that you had some unlawful motive behind that, and, and it's probably not a good business practice to just not make decisions on applications, but, so I would say those applications that come before you are a little different than deciding whether to approve a contract or, or something, like some other decisions that you make. And again, some of those timeframes and things are set out in the UDO, but like I said, you don't have a hard stop. Now, there are, are things like, when things get referred to the planning commission, if they don't make a decision and report back, you can take that up after a certain amount of time under state law. So you don't, you, if they were delaying everything, you wouldn't, wouldn't necessarily have to abide by their delays.
I don't want to be rude to interrupt too much, but I, I want to be sensitive to break time, so I don't know if now's as good a time as any, or if council wants to move on, but ordinarily, I guess I would have called a, a recess for five to 10 minutes by now. It is, are we too much in the middle of this, or is now a good time from your perspective?
It's up to you, there's not a whole lot left.
Right, of course, I know there are other things that we will take up, managers' reports and those kinds of things, but what say you, council? Excuse me?
Short recess.
All right. Let's take a, let's take a 10-minute recess, and we'll come back about eight.
We need to add that in here and call it the Berenger Break, and then be here formally in 10 to 12 minutes.
Yeah, we'll come back at eight to 25, close to it. Yeah.
The town council back into session. We'll continue with our agenda on our work session. I recognize our attorney, Ms. Jones, to continue.
Thank you. So a couple of other decisions or choices you have for public hearings, these are the mandated under state law for your rezonings, your special use permits, certain ordinances that would be adopted, annexations, things like that. Do you want to fix a set number of copies of documents you want? When attorneys or applicants generally ask me, I say one for all of, for each council member and one for the clerk, which is seven, but it's nice if the town attorney and the managers get one too, so it becomes 10 or 11 at that point. But you can set a number, and then it's in the rules. It doesn't make people have to call to know that. So that's one choice. And then it depends on how much paper and documents you really want.
So what's the magic number?
One for everybody, I guess, but I-
I mean, the minimum is you technically need one for the clerk because if it needs to be referenced or incorporated into the minutes, you'd need that. But I think when they're presenting something to you, you probably all want your own individual copies.
Asking too much for 12? If we do the council and then, of course, the clerk, and then me as the manager, but I'd also like for the assistants to have a copy because it depends on which department is, you know.
How about 12?
And 12 leaves one for a department head or a staff person in attendance to also at least have one.
Especially if they're refuting something they recommended.
They know ahead of time, 12.
All right. And then in closing the public hearings, it can either be done by the mayor or you can do a motion and a vote. Typically, the mayor has opened and closed the meetings. It's one less vote that you have to take, so.
We're fine with that.
All right. So this is maybe the big issue. So there's some internal inconsistency between your appointment and your committee structure and your existing rules, and this has come up recently. There's appointing, for appointing a vacancy. Should there be a vacancy in one of the council members or the mayor? The rest of the body gets to choose that person until the next election. In that, you can have the option of allowing the mayor to make nominations or motions and then vote on that. So that's one issue. It could happen. You could have a resignation or something where you have to fill one of your own vacancies.
Well, I mean, we've had to do it one time since I served when Mr. Jones passed away. And we, in the public meeting, decided, we took applications, we all interviewed, and then I think, if I'm recalling, you can help me on this, I think the mayor could vote all, and we discussed it, we all discussed it and voted them, including the mayor, right? Mayor Williams was there.
See, I wasn't mayor then, but I was thinking that maybe even, for all things, that the mayor didn't vote. I don't know. But he could be right.
I know we heard his opinion. Whether he voted or not, I don't know, but I-
I think that was what it was, yeah.
Well, Mr. State, he told us what he thought.
Yeah.
And then Mr. Vance, that's who we, my name is, but then. So that's, well, we told everything in an open meeting what we were going to do. There was nothing hidden or done secretly.
So do you want the option that perhaps in that case the mayor could make a nomination or vote, or you can just leave it as he would vote on a tie?
It doesn't matter either way, because if you had a 3-3, then that wouldn't work, so you'd have to persuade someone to change their mind.
Well, with a vacancy, you're going to be down at least one, maybe two members, depending on what happens, but.
You're right. Thank you.
All right.
Because if you were down one and it was 2-2, you'd have to have the mayor's vote anyway.
Well, I mean, as the current presiding officer, I don't, I mean, that's not something I'm pushing for. I guess maybe I'm influenced some by precedent, and I think the way this council and the mayor have worked over the, over years, the process has worked pretty well. So if council is comfortable, and again, I'm not trying to speak for future mayors, but I would not have a problem with basically being consistent across the board in saying the mayor doesn't vote, as he doesn't on other, he or she, on other matters now. Nominations, again, I guess I feel like if I could speak to another council member about any strong views I have, or doesn't say that the mayor can't at least speak and offer up an opinion, but if there's no vote for the mayor, I, maybe I should be arguing in the other direction, but I respect the council and its position and the way this body has functioned over the years here. That's my thoughts.
So you're saying leave it like it is?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
So under the open meetings law, whenever you create a committee and the council appoints a committee, a board or commission, that body, that board or commission or committee becomes subject to the open meetings law. The preferred and suggested rule is that it's only when you have a quorum of council members on that. Now, there are some things where you want them, and they may, under state law, like the planning commission, board of adjustment, those bodies are required to be subject to the open meetings law. But for instance, when you create another committee, you need to be cognizant of, are you creating a committee that you want to be subject to the open meetings law? Meaning there has to be notice of meetings, there have to be minutes taken, and the public is allowed the opportunity. Or are you researching something that you don't necessarily want it to be public until it's brought back to the full council for a vote? So what I've drafted here takes that out, meaning only where you have a quorum on this other committee would necessarily be subject to the open meetings law. And this is not talking about where your liaisons and you're not a member of those bodies. So for instance, the public works committee, and my understanding is the human resources committee, are treated as open meetings, as bodies subject to the open meetings law. But the FIRE merger committee was not intended to be one subject to the open meetings law, and I did not find where it was ever formally appointed by a motion and vote of council with the clerk's ample assistance on that research project.
Your recommendation is leave it as is?
Well, no. What you see in here is my recommendation. Your existing rules have some internal conflicts because there's something that says everything's subject to the open meetings law if one member, or, well, it says if members are on that board. So that could be two. And that really constrains you into not having anything where you can kind of vet items without or seek information, you know, from certain, like for instance, if, for economic development, if a company wanted to come and talk to a couple of members, you might not want that to be in an open meeting, or really, the company might not want that to be in an open meeting before they're ready to make some kind of announcement. So I'm recommending that we get rid of the inconsistency, but when you are creating a committee, just, we just have to be cognizant of what kind of committee are you creating and is it appropriate to have public input, or, well, it's not exactly public input, but public to be able to have notice of the meeting, get the minutes, and observe the meetings. I'm strongly recommending a choice on this one, but that it would be really applied to future. We would leave the public works committee, what's the other one, law and finance, but I don't think that's met in quite some time. And then your other option, if you're okay with that one, is whether you want to approve the procedural rules for the appointed boards and commissions. So the, as you may recall, the public, I mean, the parks, recreation, cultural resources, that really was already in an ordinance, so it was your decision to do those. Planning commission and board of adjustment adopt their own, but again, I have taken for the planning commission, the school of government recommended book, so they can follow that, and will be recommending the same thing for the board of adjustment. They just haven't met to adopt new rules for those. But they're supposed to file a copy with the clerk, so, you know, the rules, and we have the rules posted on the website now, so they're available. But I don't know, like veterans, I don't know that those bylaws or rules have ever been approved by council. So it's really your options, whether you want to have to approve them or not. Just delays their sort of amendment process, if there's another level in there.
I'm following you correctly. I hope I am, but I mean, I'm inclined to favor the recommendation you're making.
To allow these separate boards to just adopt their own?
Yes, ma'am.
Having, we don't want them to be legal. That's like the constraints. We want them to operate how they feel comfortable, but I think having your town attorney consult and help them craft things that are legal, I think that is sufficient.
All right. And then your special provisions, these are the ones that, well, with the exception of, and there's two rule 42s, I'll fix the numbering when I get back to that, but absences, whereas that particular rule was suggested, but it never got formally adopted by council. But decorum, the special recognitions, my concern with that one is there's a limit in there that you wouldn't do more than three recognitions or proclamations in a meeting, and then when you do the Stevens Award, that would be the only one you could have on that agenda. I don't know that that is a rule that's been strictly adhered to in the past. There is, you know, some balancing of the presentations, but I don't recall when the Stevens Award, that anyone's really been thinking like, that's the only presentation we can do that night.
I was thinking that we stuck pretty close to that, if for another reason we used to, and I guess we have, you know, set aside some time to have like a reception, but maybe sometimes, not always. But I think so for time purposes and giving that award the proper attention that it should have, and the custom to invite people in to celebrate with the person, that that was the reason the council did not want any other presentations or other things that would take additional time, that we would just have that, use up the time that evening. Did I say that very well? I'm not sure if I did. It's been a tradition in the town a long time, but I think there's wisdom in doing that particular award on a night when you don't take up time with other kinds of presentations.
I agree, because it does take a while to do it right, to do it right.
What you've got here, what I've signed, try to limit three special recognitions, because we did that because of, or tried to do that because of sometime late the meetings. Because sometimes presentations, an individual may take 10, 15 minutes, and you do three, you're at 45 minutes into your meeting, so what you've got here is reasonable.
And the last thing was the time limit about not introducing new items, or not beginning discussion of an agenda item after 10:15 with your new meeting time. I don't know if you want to adjust that or just leave that as it is.
Change it to 9:15?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Is that what you're asking?
If you want to change it. I think, since I've been here, it's only come up once or twice at the most.
I had no trouble leaving it, and the reason being, if we have, have had a long public hearing that we didn't expect to go that long, and then there's like one item left, a staff, that a staff person's been sitting here the whole time, and it's going to take us 10 minutes, and I think we should have the option to vote and say, hey, let's go ahead and do it and get it out of the way. There's no need to prolong it. And again, it doesn't happen very often. But we have had a couple of, it's been a while, a couple of jim-dandy public hearings that take two, two and a half hours. So I had no problem just leaving it where you have it.
Okay. And then last year, you adopted the liaison policy by a separate resolution, and that's really for where you're serving as liaison and not a member officially appointed to another board or commission. I didn't, since that was so recent, and it was adopted by a separate resolution, I didn't incorporate it into the rules, but if you want it incorporated into the rule, you know, I can do that as the last numbered rule. If it's easier for you to have one document.
Yeah.
So incorporate it.
That's what I would suggest.
Because I was at my conference, and this issue came up, and I think because of what happened in Durham last week at their city council, I will remind you that you have adopted a confidentiality policy for closed sessions. Not every place does that, so I'm just reminding you that you have that in your rules, that you don't release the items discussed in a closed session if it would frustrate the purpose of the closed session. And, you know, just reminding you, you have a decorum policy like that to treat everyone with respect. All right, that's all I had, unless you want to add another rule.
Just one on the, on the public hearings, and under, it's rule 36, and who calls the public hearings, and I think it's appropriate that no public hearings would be scheduled without a vote from the council, even if it's appearing on a consent agenda.
So what you're saying is, like, you have to do, like, annexations, there has to be a calling of the public hearing before you can have a public hearing. You would want that for all other public hearings?
Yes. That would, has to, we have to be aware of a public hearing being scheduled, and we would do that. It can be on the consent agenda, and that's how we vote on it. But there shouldn't be a public hearing scheduled without council's vote.
Well, I mean, I hear what you're saying. I guess my response is, it seems to me that, you know, on the agenda, we pretty much always list public hearings under a topical heading. I can't remember us voting on a public hearing on a consent agenda. Have we or not?
You set the dates.
What?
You set the dates of public hearings through consent agenda?
For annexations.
Only for annexations right now.
Only for annexations, okay.
So there's, there's your planning, you know, your rezoning, special use permits, and annexations, and then you sometimes have to have a public hearing for certain types of ordinance adoptions as well. And, you know, you have to have a budget public hearing and, you know. So right now, they're on the pending agenda, although that's somewhat fluid.
All right. Just referencing what occurred last year with those special use permit hearing being scheduled without us knowing it was happening, but it was also prior to the rezoning meeting that we had. And I think, again, it goes back to that control of the agenda. If we're the body that has to engage the public, we should be aware that it's being set. Now, like I say, it can be on a consent agenda, and it can just, you know, that's the awareness we get, but be made aware of them through consent agenda and a vote, that's how they just go through. But I don't, again, I've said it, we're the ones that are engaging the public. We should be in charge of ultimately when that happens.
Well, I don't know if the council wants to weigh in on that, but maybe I'm missing something, but I mean, I guess I'm thinking that, you know, public hearings don't take place until they go on our agenda under public hearings. And of course, now with the- And of course, now with the town staff presenting to us upcoming items, I'm thinking we're made aware of any public hearings in advance, right?
I mean, I can write an email describing, it has not been the case, it's, it's not happened to where we've been aware of certain things, and it's been a little problematic, I think. I'll leave that for later.
Okay, if you're comfortable with that, you know, send me an email, we'll. Let's see, you've got questions on here, so yeah, let's go round robin. Of course, Damian just raised a question. Any other specific questions from council in regards to, I mean, this, let's see, do we formally, I guess, we, we won't do it tonight necessarily, vote on, on this, right?
No, once I consolidate all of these changes, they will be presented to you on a future agenda for a vote, and I guess whether it's on consent, you know, whether you think there needs to be additional discussion would depend on where you want to see that on the agenda either. You would be adopting these by resolution, you don't have to have a public hearing, I don't know if you would want a, you, you could call a public hearing on this, but I don't know if you really need public comment on your meeting rules, but it's an option you could have.
If we vetted everything tonight, I, I think consent agenda's fine with that, no need to, that's my opinion.
Anybody else on council want to weigh in on that?
Consent agenda's fine with me.
Well, yeah, we, we will vote in that fashion then, I guess. And, and, well, the point is.
It won't come back next week.
Right, right.
Oh, come on.
Well, no, I mean, the idea is to send you a clean copy that, you know, that you can make sure that I've captured all of the direction that you've given me tonight.
And that then becomes our working document, rules and the whole bit?
Yes, you know, I would suggest it becomes effective like the next meeting kind of thing.
I could, I could get rid of this old book here, I think, right? Basically, I mean, I might want to keep it for historical purposes or two, but I mean, that, that becomes our working.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay. It's understood by everybody, I'm sure. Okay.
All right.
Was that it?
That is it.
Okay.
For me.
Thank you, thank you very much, Ms. Jones, for all the work you've done on that. I mean, I know there's, there's a, as I got looking back through those things, I'm thinking there's a lot of things that need some changes or tweaking, so I appreciate the work you put into that, all right? All right, we are now, Mr. Manager, I believe, ready for your report.
Yes, and Mr. Hodges is going to lead this discussion. He's had some conversations with DOT and some others about the potential for renaming a section of Highway 70, so he wanted to talk to you about that.
So, Mayor, council members, good evening. Just wanted to bring this to your attention. We don't need to spend a lot of time on this tonight, but can spend as much time as you'd like to. Wanted to make you aware of something that was brought to our attention from our friends in Clayton. Primarily wanted you to be aware of this in case you were contacted by any of your peers in elected office in Clayton, because they've got an initiative they want to move forward on their part of this discussion that may or may not need to timeout with anything we wanted to do. The, you may be aware of a concept to identify or create Interstate 42 that is from the Clayton area to the coast. In doing that, there's going to have to be some renaming of some roads, and there is going to be, Highway 70 currently follows, the, the 70 bypass, as we usually refer to it, is going to be renamed as Interstate 42. And to make a Highway 70, what is now 70 business from Interstate 40 through Clayton is going to be going back to being Highway 70. So the Highway 70 business naming will go away. This doesn't have to make any changes for us, but some of the leaders in Clayton are desiring to petition DOT to name the segment at least through Clayton, something that has some localized name, so something like the Knightdale Boulevard, Knightdale Boulevard. And they reached out to us to see if there was any interest in doing something jointly with Garner. We don't necessarily believe that, that because this, this road would end significantly down into Johnston County, where you would see signage, if we did something that was a Clayton-Garner, you know, Boulevard or something like that, that it necessarily makes sense to have that naming nomenclature starting well into Johnston County. Clayton could have the option to do whatever naming they'd like to do on top of Highway 70 on their own, and it would stop at the county line. One of the issues I think we should be considered of is if we petition for that change, how is the, the name change going to affect the businesses? There's always going to be, already going to be some name changes that have to happen when NC DOT may make the folks from 40 to the county line change their addresses. Some of those businesses never went to a Business 70 address, and they've been allowed to keep it, but there's some inconsistency there. So we just at least wanted to make you aware of this concept, so that if you were contacted by anyone from Clayton, asking what's Garner think about renaming the road, we wanted you to at least be aware of the concept of it. And I think, and we could, staff can continue to research and answer any questions. It sounds like that this process will not start in, until the fall with DOT making the, the request to the Standards Division, ASHTO, that this has to go through. So it may not come up at all for a while, but because the other, the other municipality had been asking about Garner's interest, we want to at least introduce it to you so you were aware of it. So I'll pause there and see if there's any questions.
So if we do nothing, it's just going to remain Highway 70?
It will go back to being Highway 70 for that segment. And then if Garner ever chose to do something, we think it would probably be more likely or more appropriate for Garner to consider something from the county line, maybe to the 401 split, if you really ever wanted to entertain naming, but that would probably only be if we were allowed to do a naming that did not cause address changes. It could be a ceremonial name or an additional name that would be on top of the additional, the official business address, but we believe it would be, it would, we would not want to lead an effort to cause address changes for those folks along that corridor unless we really felt like there was an overwhelming need to do that.
So John, again, I don't want to sound dense on this, but looking at your map here, do I understand then that the segment beginning at the Wake-Johnston County line, the segment that goes on east would be, and I see down below, there's something about 11, 8.88 miles, that is the segment part that Clayton would change to the Boulevard, and the thing that's on the other side of 70, it comes back our way, would remain, would it remain Business 70?
No, Business 70 will be going away from I-40. So all three of these segments, the yellow, the light blue, and the sort of gold color, all of those on your map labeled A, B, and C are currently 70 business, they will all become 70. In addition to that, Clayton may choose to ask for some other naming that would be atop that. So I think in Knightdale, that is still technically a, a US 64 address, but you have the other name as well that you can go by. Did that answer your question, Mayor?
Lot of confusion.
Mayor, did that answer your question? Okay, Mr. Matthews, I'm sorry.
I was just, that's going to create a lot of confusion.
Yeah.
Keep it 70, yes. The Clayton bypass is going to be changed to I-42.
Yes, sir.
So I-42 will also cross over Highway 42.
Well, funny you should mention that, they're going to rename Highway 42 to Highway 36 up until it gets to I, to US 50. I didn't even bring those maps, because it just gets really confusing.
So I-42, which has been around since the earth cooled.
Yeah.
I mean, if you took before all this, Cam, say, you went from Garner, Clayton, if you quit, you got on 42. And they can change that section to 36.
At, at, at 50. So as you go down to 50 and take a left at the new grocery store, Food Lion, you'll be on 36 all the way up to, up to, and it'll share a stretch of 70, and then it'll go north and go, you know, as 42 goes north towards Wiltson now. That'll be renamed to 36. So the whole Clayton area is.
The whole 40 and 42 section will become 40 and 36, and all those address changes to all those businesses.
It's going to be a lot, and, and for our friends in Clayton, it, it includes every one of their pharmaceutical manufacturers who are federally regulated, and so the process just to change the addresses for those federally regulated facilities is beyond what I can even really fathom, so. But there's going to be a lot of change with this whole I-42. Again, we don't think there's any need to do anything now, but we didn't want y'all to get a phone call from your peers and not know what was, what was being discussed.
So, so does Clayton have a name, they want to call it all the way to the Johnston line that we know of?
Their, their staff member that reached out to us just said we'd like to look at naming it something, and I said, is that, I'm sure you're going to want to go alphabetic and be the Clayton Garner, Clayton Garner Boulevard or something like that, but they didn't share any specific names that they're looking at, that they first wanted to know, did Garner want to go together and do something jointly for the entire corridor, this being renamed, which would be from 40 all the way down to 70?
Rather have our name on there somehow, even I know it, you say, it kind of doesn't make sense to be Garner all the way down into, you know, Johnston County, but for people coming up to what, at future 42, and there's a sign that says, anything that has Garner on it, I'm kind of in favor of, I'd rather it be that than just the Clayton Boulevard or something, and it's one less.
They have a Garner mailing address.
But I do, I do think another, another thing to look at, and it wouldn't be at the intersection of, of I-42, Mr. Dellinger, but another opportunity could be in the future, if we ever wanted to take 70 from the county line all the way to like the 401 split and name that something. That is a backbone of our community, we're designing our transit around it, we're, you know, we, we're always looking at ways to, to work with both sides of that, that, that might be a more, a more impactful naming opportunity in the future, rather than something that's going to be, more of it being in Johnston County than it would be in, in Wake County. I, I'd like to have our name on a sign as well, I just think there might be a better sign to have our name on in the future, and let DOT work the kinks of these address changes out before we go and ask for, I don't know if vanity name is the correct name that they use, they do for plates, but a vanity name for the highway, and work that out after we see how things go with the whole renaming, and it gives us some time also with 540 coming, being planned further across there, to figure out what might be more meaningful to us.
I think I'd like to go back to the days of when I can remember working at the hardware store, and of course Garner Road used to be 70, and many old timers called it either Old 70 or their old highway. There aren't many left that call it that, but that's what it was called.
All right, so that's all, we just wanted to make you aware of this, so that if you got, you, any, reached out by anyone, we wanted you to be aware of, of what was going on.
Thanks, sir. For sure, okay.
And the only other thing I had was just a reminder that the extravaganza will happen on Saturday, 10, 10 a.m. So we'll have a lot of, a lot of kids running around Lake Benson Park, I believe it's at Lake Benson Park on Saturday for that.
Okay, was that it?
That's it.
All right, well, we'll go to council reports, and I'll start with Mr. Matthews.
Nothing this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Singleton?
Like public works or the work they're doing on the unrestricted trash pickups, a lot of work.
Yeah. Okay, and Ms. Berenger, I'll go last.
Just a couple of things. On West Garner Road up by the entrance to Cleverdale and the Grocery Boy Junior, across the road from that, near the railroad track, there's been an empty lot for a long time. They've been having some containers up there that are empty, large, like railroad containers, but at any rate, I noticed coming by there this week, there are maybe up to 10 junk car, wrecked cars, some of them upside down, some of them stacked on top of each other. Can we look into that? It looks like a junkyard.
Hmm.
And it's right there, it's right beside the, close to the armory.
Okay.
On the same side of the road as the armory.
All right, we'll look into that.
Okay, if we can look into that. And I wish I could have been at the VA groundbreaking this morning, just a quick question, how much advance notice did we get as far as being invited to that? Do you, does anybody know?
I think I can answer that. They sent out a save the date, what, at least two weeks ago, or more than that, I think.
I didn't hear anything about it until last Thursday, and I already had something scheduled today, but I would, you know, if I'd have known more earlier, I could have rearranged that number. My father-in-law was a World War II vet, and he had a Purple Heart, and it means a lot to us, so I would like to have been there, but I didn't know in time, so.
I think I'm right on the timeframe, or no?
That sounds about right, I don't know if they had a time scheduled at that time of day, but they did save the date, so yeah.
Yeah. Okay, anything else? Uh, Mr. Dellinger?
It's all right, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Vance?
Nothing to know.
Well, all right, so just a couple of things, Mayor.
Just add, I'm not sure who that save the date went to, because that was all of that.
I thought it went to all council members.
So I wasn't sure if it went to all council members or not, but we'll, we'll try to be aware of that in future things.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing it earlier, I may have, but I don't remember, and I really would like to have been there.
Yeah. All right, well, since we've already alluded to that, that was a nice ceremony today out there at the, if you, you can probably see from 50 and also the other road that goes up there, obviously a lot of work has already been done, so it's kind of impressive to, to be on the site itself and, and see it all there, it's going to be a, a big, big place, and some of the VA people there, and some guys we've met before, and the, what was her name, Dr. Smith, who will be the CEO when it opens, is that right?
Well, she's the, Dr. Smith is the CEO of the, the system.
I'm sorry?
She's the CEO of the VA hospital system in this area.
Yeah.
Not just that location.
Okay, well, I know Paul, he's a regional guy. Okay, all right. Anyway, there were any number of folks here, and it was, it was a good day, and Mr. Matthews, amazingly, thanks, sir.
Very impressive.
Yeah. I'd like to publicly thank all the persons who participated in the litter sweep this past Saturday, I saw some pictures, I believe, on Facebook, and I wasn't able to be there because of a conflict, but appreciate those people who came out and, and picked up litter in various places, they did a good job. And also, let me see, as you know, the county commissioners will have a vote on the thing that's already in the media about the, the grant that Garner gets from the sales tax, did I say that right? And I understand that will be around, probably at their meeting on the 17th of April, and I've had a chance to talk to a couple of commissioners, and gotten a lot of encouragement that, that'll go through, I think, and hope, so that's a good thing. All right, I believe that's it. Anybody, Mr. Manager or John, do you got anything? Anything else? Okay. All right, well, I think we've finished our work session, so if you're all ready, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Okay, a motion made in second, if you favor that, vote aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you all for.
It's going to be wet out, that's what you.